I have Alex Peterson, who's our Government Affairs Director, Bob Bruno, who's our Director of Engineering, and Barry Palank, who's our Director of General Aviation Airports. Really want to thank the Council for giving me the opportunity to come here tonight to talk about some of the issues of concern at Hartford-Brainerd. Before I do that, maybe give you just some quick background. The CAA, the Connecticut Airport Authority, was created in 2011. We're a quasi-public agency of the state. We're the successor agency to the DOT. We own and operate Bradley International Airport, as well as five general aviation airports here in the state. Certainly Hartford-Brainerd is one of those general aviation airports. We also have regulatory authority for all airports and aviation matters throughout Connecticut. I guess when you look at Hartford-Brainerd, in 2020, we had about 49,000 aircraft operations at the airport. That is certainly down from 2010. In 2010, there were about 71,000 operations at the airport. If you look at the economic impact of Brainerd, 2019 economic impact study showed that the airport was generating about $59 million worth of overall economic impact. It was supporting 361 jobs, wages of $28 million, and state and local taxes of about $1.3 million. At the airport, there are 10 direct tenants of the CAA, and there are 20 sub-tenants of those tenants at the airport. Now, the issues that have been brought to our attention, that folks wanted to talk about tonight or hear about tonight, are first and foremost noise, tree removal, runway lengthening, and then runway decommissioning. So let me start with the noise issue. Certainly, we try to work with the communities that surround all of our airports when it comes to noise. This is typically an issue that you find at just about any airport across the country. At Brainerd, we have an extensive effort to outreach to the pilot community. We distribute flyers on a routine basis, reminding them of the noise abatement procedure, principally to try to follow a river approach to the airport. We also have signs posted along the fence line of the airport, and we actually have signs at the departure ends of the runways, reminding pilots just before they take off to try to follow that noise abatement procedure. Unfortunately, it is voluntary. We, as an airport operator, cannot require a particular procedure to be followed. The FAA has purview over the airspace. We do not control the airspace as the airport operator. However, the FAA would tell you that they also will not restrict actual approaches, because that's for the safety of the aircraft, as well as for the safety of people on the ground as well. So it's really the pilot in command of the aircraft that has final say as to what approach he's going to be using coming to the airport. In terms of noise complaints at the airport, over the past year, there's been 217 noise complaints lodged regarding 1,810 operations. In terms of breakdown of those calls, one caller was responsible for 81% of all of the calls, and those calls involved 88% of the operation. If you look at the top 10 callers to the airport, they represent about 81.5% of all the calls, involving 95.7% of all of the operations at the airport. Again, we try to do the best we can with noise, and we will continue to advise the flight community of the absolute need for them to comply as best they can with that river approach. In terms of tree removal, this is a project that we have been discussing at the Airport Authority for the past four years. It's a long-delayed project. It's a project that we absolutely need to move forward with to ensure safety at the airport. The project involves dealing with about 36.7 acres of trees that surround the airport. In total, about 23 of those acres will involve mechanical cutting, meaning either trees will be completely cut, or what's referred to as snag cutting. There'll be a certain portion of the trunk of the tree that will be left for wildlife purposes. And then the remaining 13 acres are topping, trimming of the trees. When you talk about Weathersfield in particular, out of that total 36.7 acres, about 9.5 acres are located in Weathersfield. Weathersfield owns one acre of that 9.5 acres. But if you look at the total of the 9.5 acres, about half will be topped, and the other half will be snag cut. Okay? When you talk about the one acre that Weathersfield owns, all of that involves topping. I think it's important to point out, when we talk about this tree project, that the vast majority of the acreage that we're talking about is covered by a 1959 easement that was granted to the state from the city of Hartford. A lot of folks don't realize that one time, the city of Hartford owned and operated the airport. It was transferred to the state in 1959. At that time, the state obtained an easement from the city of Hartford that called for the city of Hartford to actually cut trees when they became obstructions at their expense. In order to get this project moving forward, we have agreed that we will cut the trees at our expense. We simply need the city to honor the ability for us to go on to the property under that easement. There are other property owners that we're dealing with, private property owners, as well as the city of Weathersfield, or the town of Weathersfield, that we have to obtain permission to go on to that property to top those trees that I talked about earlier. I think it's important to understand the necessity of this project is to maintain the safety of the airport, okay? I do have a depiction here. It's not easily followed, but I'll try to reference it. The two runway ends that impact Weathersfield are runway two arrivals and runway 20 departures. If you look at this depiction here, all of those trees that you see outlined in red are violating that surface. And this surface is a 20-to-1 surface that is 200 feet behind each threshold on the runway. So I think there's a misconception on--
Kevin, if I can just ask you real quick--
Sure.
I mean, we've--you guys have all seen that. If you can turn it to the audience to have them take a look. Thanks, Alex.
Put it up against--
Or yeah, maybe up against the wall, so it's a little bit-- Yep.
Okay. It's difficult to pick up, as I said, but if you see the shading on these trees, all of those trees in red are violating the surface, okay? So once it violates that surface, it becomes an obstruction. So we have to deal with these issues from a safety standpoint, right? Because if you have pilots who are relying on that 21--20-to-1 surface to approach the airport, and that's what our thresholds are cited at, it becomes a significant safety issue. So it really has nothing to do with this discussion about a runway extension, okay? This is all about maintaining the existing runway length at the airport. Let me move on to the issue of the runway extension, because I think, folks, if they do follow the airport, you see that we recently completed a master plan for Brainerd Airport. And in that master plan, you will see two items listed: safety overruns and runway extension, okay? Safety overruns are required at the end of each runway for overrunning aircraft, right? If an aircraft can't stop at the designated end of a runway, you have to have an overrun area. Today, at Hartford-Brainerd, we do not have those safety overruns on our main runway, runway 220. That's a 300-foot area that has to be installed on each side of that runway, okay? So when you put in these safety overruns, it leads to a consequence of essentially a runway extension in certain configurations. If you look at runway two, which impacts Weathersfield, and that's the approach that comes into runway two, that comes over Weathersfield, the installation of these safety overruns will actually shorten the runway, okay? Because you have to keep in mind, the thresholds of the runway are fixed by the dike, okay? So they can't be moved, because the dike itself would represent an obstruction if you move those thresholds further back. So if we move forward with the safety overrun project, the actual arrival distance or landing distance that's available to aircraft will be 300 foot less on runway two coming in. On runway 20, that's where you get into this configuration where you could consider it a runway extension, okay? Because you have to keep in mind, even though the threshold for runway 20 is fixed, aircraft rolling out to depart on runway 20, if we add that extra distance, would actually have that extra footage that we're including as a safety overrun available for takeoff run, okay? That does not mean that the size of aircraft can change at the airport, okay? First of all, it's very limited what would be added to the runway, and you have to keep in mind, if, you know, a certain-sized aircraft can only get in to the airport because of that runway restriction that I talked about, and we're actually shortening the runway, you're not going to get a larger-sized aircraft out, right? Because you can't get a larger-sized aircraft into the airport. The benefit, if there is a benefit, it would allow departures on runway 20 to potentially take on some additional fuel, potentially some additional payload, but you can't change the size of the aircraft, okay? So I think it's important that folks understand, it's listed in that master plan as a runway extension, because potentially, the pavement is going to be added to for that safety overrun, but it really doesn't change the aircraft nature or the aircraft use of the airport. The last item that I'll touch on quickly is the airport decommissioning. I think a lot of folks are aware that the city of Hartford has passed a non-binding resolution to decommission the airport. I think it's very important for a housing and airport, all right? There are a number of things that have to be considered first and foremost. The FAA would require that a study be undertaken to demonstrate that there's a higher and better use for the airport, okay? We'd also have to pay back all of the outstanding federal grants that still have useful life on them. Right now, it's about $1.8 to $2 million worth of outstanding grant life that's left at this point. We'd also have to consider tenant action. As I said, there are 10 primary tenants at the airport. Some of them have long-term leases at the airport. We would certainly have to pay back any investment that they've made into the property, as well as there's a potential for legal action for lost opportunity that we would be subject to. And then lastly, there is an FAA requirement that may be triggered because of how the property for the airport was originally purchased from the city of Hartford, that may require whoever ends up with the property to pay fair market value for it. Today, the airport's about a little bit over 200 acres, so you're talking millions of dollars of value in terms of fair market value for the property. I have to be very clear, the CAA is not in a financial position to utilize any of our resources to close the airport. So I have to be very clear on that. I'll say it again, the CAA will not be using any of our resources to close the airport. We've made that clear to the city of Hartford. The only other scenario that I could envision, if that airport was to be decommissioned, is action by the state legislature. As I said earlier, we're a quasi-public agency that was created by the state legislature. The state could certainly take that airport back from the CAA, or require the CAA to close it, with the understanding that the state would have to be responsible for all of those financial implications that I just laid out. We have had many conversations with the city of Hartford. I personally believe that the airport could serve as a great economic driver for the city. I have not been able to convince the city of that, and at this point, I do think it's important for us to be successful. We have to have a cooperation, or a level of cooperation, from the host city, right? Because when you think it through, if everybody hears every three years, there's another push to close Brainerd Airport, no one wants to invest in the airport, right? So we need to clear the decks. Either the airport's going to be closed, or we start--we need to start getting that level of cooperation, so that the airport can serve as the economic asset that it should for the city and the region. So with that, I'd be happy to handle any questions.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Any questions from Council? Here, Councilman Forrest.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, Kevin. Got a nice audience here for you. The--there's a landing fee to land at Brainerd, correct? Like, a lot of airports have different landing fees, even the big ones?
Well, there's different--there's a different fee structure at the airport. It's not a landing fee per se. Aircraft operators will pay for parking charges. There's fees that are paid on fuel flowage at the airport. There are rentals that come into the airport as well.
So at some airports, even the bigger ones, you know, if you land your plane, if it's a full-stop landing, you get charged a fee for each one. And I know when I flew from this airport out to Block Island, if you get like a lobster roll at the place, then the landing fee is waived. But you're saying there's not a landing fee here at Brainerd when you land?
No. You're talking about the revenues that come to the CAA?
I'm not. I'm just talking about, I want to land my plane in a Brainerd railway--runway two, runway 20.
Sure.
This is corporate business, yes, for a private civilian pilot coming in now.
Okay.
It's not a business--
Could you repeat? You're not loud enough. Can you speak up?
Yep.
I have to even go to the--
Actually, yes, if you don't mind joining Kevin up there.
Just for a corporate, business, or revenue-producing aircraft. For a private aircraft, no.
So they use it completely for free?
Hang on, ma'am.
Like Kevin said, that they pay other fees, other fees such as parking fees, you know, fuel flowage fees, and things of that nature.
So just to follow up on that, some airports though do have landing fees, correct?
Sure.
We land whether it's--
Bradley has a landing fee.
Bradley, JFK even, you could take your plane at JFK, and you'd pay a fee. Why don't we have landing fees? Why is that fee structure not--I mean, Brainerd is not a little Chester Airport either. This is a pretty good-sized thing in a city.
My experience at a number of airport systems that I've worked at, as well as talking to other airport operators across the country, typically, you do not see landing fees at general aviation airports. You typically see them at what I would call "commercial service" airports.
And do you want to become a "commercial service" airport? Is that the goal here?
At Brainerd? No.
What is the--I mean, we've always talked about expanding the services, so it's an economic engine. I believe that's the term you used. So if you want it to be an economic engine, are we not driving for activity here?
Well, I think when I say "an economic engine," I'm looking for people to invest in the airport, other people to build hangars at the airport that are potentially subject to taxation. I think a successful airport can also serve as a corporate base at the airport. For example, there was a 2016 study done by the state legislature that looked at whether or not Brainerd should stay as an airport. The three, or three major insurance companies in the city of Hartford had indicated that their presence in Hartford would be a lot less desirable if Hartford-Brainerd closed. So in terms of--there are very few cities in the country that have airports right on their front door. I certainly believe that's an asset for the city of Hartford to have that airport there. Now, admittedly, because of runway length, you're never really going to change the character of aircraft that operate there. As I said earlier, the dike really limits what that runway length can be. But quite frankly, I think to preserve a lot of the corporate activity in Hartford, I do think it plays a role.
So it's my understanding that for the planes that don't take the suggested route into landing on runway two, that there's no opportunity to sort of find them? Is that generally accurate?
That's correct.
But we could, if they chose a path that was not beneficial, we could charge a landing fee for them, couldn't we?
We couldn't discriminate between operators, is that what--
Not operators. If you choose to land straight, and you want to fly over a residential neighborhood, and that's how you land your plane, you get a landing fee. You choose to take the water route, you don't get a landing fee.
Yeah. I think the FAA would see right through that for what it is.
What is it?
It's discriminatory activity against aircraft that's not following a prescribed approach.
How's that discriminatory? I mean, if they're told not to do it, and they're doing it, I don't know how that's discriminatory.
It's a fine. It's tantamount to a fine, and we cannot levy a fine for someone not following a noise abatement approach. It's as simple as that.
See, I think, I actually, I respectfully disagree. We're not telling anybody, as you said, the pilot can fly the plane. Pilot can land at Brainerd, pilot can land at Chester, pilot can land at Waterbury, pilot can land at Bradley. They can land any way they choose, but they want to land in Brainerd in a way in which is disruptive to the people, then they have to pay a landing fee, just like you have to pay a landing fee to land in other places. And we're not telling them how to fly the plane. This is just their privilege. If they want to have the privilege of flying over, and having a safe landing at this particular airport, just like any other, they have to pay that fee. I'd like you to think about that, because I think that is a way around, but while it still preserves the sanctity of the safety of the aircraft, ability to land in any which way you choose, at any place you want to choose, and anytime you want to choose it. But if you do choose it in this perspective, in the method, then you do have a landing fee, because that's the method you chose. Still pilot's choice, though, and that's the difference. It's the safety difference.
Sure.
Second thing I want to talk to you about is operational profit. Does this--does the airport operate as a profit, in a profiter--in a profiter way?
No, the airport loses money.
So why would we continue to do this if we're going to lose money?
Most general aviation airports do not turn a profit, and that's--I'm talking across the country. It's the economic return that we're looking to generate from the airport, the employment that we generate from the airport. But our general aviation system, the five general aviation airports that we operate, essentially, they operate as a unified enterprise fund. It loses money every year.
And is there a plan in order to make our airports, whether it's regionally or throughout the entire state, more profitable?
Yes. Part of the issue with Brainerd is that lack of investment that's generated by the continued, or the lack of investment that's unfortunately due to the continued talk about the closure of the airport contributes to that. But I think it's important to point out that Brainerd Airport is not subsidized by the taxpayers, right? There are not--there's not tax revenue, there's not general fund revenue coming to the CAA for the operation of those airports. How the general aviation airports in the state are funded is through the aviation fuel tax, okay? So that's a tax on every gallon of aviation fuel. The vast majority of that tax is being created or being paid by the airlines at Bradley Airport. That generates about $8 million. That's pre-pandemic. The pandemic has certainly had a damper on activity levels. That $8 million goes to fund the general aviation airports, as well as construction activity at all airports in the state, with the exception of Bradley, and it also subsidizes Tweet New Haven Airport as well.
So the tax revenue mostly, but not exclusively, from Bradley, that benefit is then transferred down to the other airports in order to cover their financial losses. Is that generally accurate?
Yes.
But the--this particular airport, which we're talking about here today, if it wasn't for the revenue that was derived at another airport, Bradley, it would be operating at a loss, or it does operate at a loss--
It does.
--if you look at the airport individually.
Yes, it does.
And why not raise fees to match the operational aspect of it? Have it be, you know, you can even have it be neutral, but have it be neutral.
Well, we also have to balance the fee structure with competing states, all right? There's a fee structure over in Rhode Island, there's a fee structure in Massachusetts, over in New York, that we have to compare ourselves with as well.
Is that not the business case, actually, for decommissioning, though?
Well--
It's a non--
If you don't believe in the economic numbers that I said the airport's generating, if it was just a standalone, and there was no economic benefit to the region, if there was no employment being generated, I guess I'd agree with you. But that's not the case in terms of the economic benefit that the airport's generating.
Now, if the decommissioning, if the stakeholders, let's say, were on board for the decommissioning, whether it's Weathersfield, it sounds like it's mostly driven by Hartford, possibly the state. If Hartford wants to decommission it, and obviously pony up the millions of dollars that you said were to pay off the leases, and so on and so forth, if Hartford was on board with that and came up with the resources, is the CAA in a position that they're going to say, "No, I know Hartford wants to do it, they're ready to do it, you know, we're going to say"--CAA says, "No, we think it's too important," or whatever the reason is, right, for the region. What's your thought on how the CAA would take something like that? It seems like Hartford's getting ready to go.
Well, I'm certainly not aware that Hartford has indicated that they're prepared to step forward and undertake all of those financial burdens, including potential legal action on the part of tenants. I can only say it from the CAA standpoint. I've said it publicly a number of times, for the airport to be successful, as I would gauge success, the host city has to be cooperative, and it has to be on board with the development of the airport. And I've said it very publicly, that if the city of Hartford is not on board with the development of Hartford-Brainerd, we do have to talk about the future of the airport.
All right. Okay. Thanks for your time. I appreciate you coming down here very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Please. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Kevin. I have a couple of questions, and none of them are really related, so I'm just going to bounce around. On those two drawings that you show there, can you point out the one acre that Weathersfield controls?
Do you have that on here?
Yeah, you won't be able to see it, but it's back, back on the side of the--I can't see up on the backside of the stereo over here.
Okay.
Alpha 20.
Where the code is?
Yes. Yeah. Yep. Those that are right, yeah.
And along with that question, what would happen if Weathersfield did not sign the approval for you to go on to the property? Do you have the legal right to just go in and cut the trees anyways?
No, I mean, there is the potential that we would have to move forward with some type of condemnation action to get on to the property.
Could you say that again?
I said, "There is the potential that we would be required to move forward with some type of condemnation action."
Do you anticipate cutting any more trees as a result of the overrun areas at each end?
No. Now, again, as I said, the thresholds for the runway which drive these surfaces cannot be altered because of the location of the dike.
When you're cutting the trees, how far below that plane are you going to try to cut? Years ago, I'm not sure of the date, maybe the 80s, there was a horrendous job of removing trees. So how--I'm assuming you're not going to just cut right to that plane, you're going to anticipate growth.
Yeah, sure. What we're doing is, Kevin said, there's mechanized cutting, and there's two methods of mechanized cutting. It's cutting it flush to the ground, the stump, and then there's a snag cut, which is going to cut it 10 feet off the ground. And there's a lot of topping, which means they're going to go in there and top. When we go in there, when you mechanize, cut it all the way flush, you're taking it all the way down, we typically like to cut 10 feet below the surface. So if we're going to go in an area and not mechanizedly cut it all the way down and top it, we're cutting it 10 feet below the surface.
10 feet below the surface of that plane?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Along with Counselor Forrest's question, who makes the ultimate decision to close the airport? I understood it was the legislature, is that correct?
Well, we are governed by a board, okay? So there's an 11-member board that are appointed by various members of the legislature, as well as the governor. That board ultimately has the decisions as to what occurs within the CAA from a policy standpoint. Why I mention the legislature is the legislature created the CAA. So it's certainly my belief that the legislature could pass legislation, taking back the airports, or taking back some of the airports, or just Hartford-Brainerd Airport as well.
If every surrounding town, including Hartford, the entire area, said they want to decommission the airport, does your organization have the authority to close the airport?
Sure, we have the authority to close the airport, so long as-- Sure. We have, we have the authority to close the airport so long as we follow FAA regulations in that closure. But, as I said before, I have to make it very clear, the CAA does not have the financial resources to close the airport.
Understood.
You know, one of the other things that's important to keep in mind, that even though we're a quasi-public agency, we do not have sovereign immunity, right? So we are subject to lawsuits, unlike the state.
I have a question about the noise abatement procedures. I have a copy of the graphic, if you will, of the approach. And the way I see it, if they, if pilots choose to follow the noise abatement procedures on approach, they're still coming in straight over the north end of Main Street. According to this map. So, I think some people may be confused that if everybody used the noise abatement procedure, they're still going to hear noise. It's-
Yeah, I mean, just the, you know, the proximity of the river to the town, right? Even if they followed the river, you still will observe aircraft and hear aircraft.
Would you, would you characterize a straight-in approach as the method that you would use to train pilots?
I'm sorry?
Would you characterize the straight-in approach, which creates more noise, as the safest approach when you're training pilots, or if the pilot is in an emergency situation, he's going to want to come in, straight in? Is that a true statement?
Well, I'm not a pilot. Barry, I don't know if you feel comfortable answering that question.
When you're trained as a pilot, you're trained, you know, to line up on the runway as soon as you can, and that would be a straight-in approach, if you could. And some of the issues at Brainerd, because at the proximity, you know, to town of Weathersfield, it's only probably 1,600 to 1,800 feet off the end of the runway. You know, say for takeoff, the pilots have to climb to 700 feet before they make a turn to the left. A lot of that puts them over Weathersfield for a longer period of time. They, and that's how they're trained, because that's the safest way to train pilots.
If I'm a student pilot at Brainerd and have to do X amount of touch and goes for my training process or certification, would the instructors recommend a straight-in approach or the approach over the river?
It all depends on the type of qualification of the pilot and the aircraft they're flying. You know, if it's beginning pilot, they would be most likely, you know, straight in until they can capable, be capable of doing something more complex.
It would, it's a more difficult maneuver coming in over the river, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Councilman Hill?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. Just a first couple of quick comments. You had mentioned regarding the, the phone number that residents can call into, and there's, there's often, I've been fortunate enough to be on the Brainerd Noise Committee for the last couple of years, and so we get printout of, you know, who calls and when. And, you know, being on that committee, and a lot of the folks in the audience who, who are the folks who do call in, frankly, they, they don't actually even call anymore, because there's, there's no action that can be taken by the airport to address any of the issues. So, I just wouldn't put a lot of stock in, you know, in people who call, people who don't call, the percentage of one person, just because it's, nothing can be done. And that kind of leads to my second point, is that's where I feels over at a bit of an impasse, just because of the nature of your authority. And, you know, your job is to get your, these airports to grow and thrive, and I completely respect that, and I think you do a very good job of this, specifically for Bradley Airport. But for, for an airport to grow, I assume you would need more flights and more action, more, more bodies, more flights taking off and landing. And that's just, that's exactly what a lot of the residents we speak to, that's exactly what they don't want. So, you can kind of appreciate the situation we're in here, you know, you want to grow, and we don't want you to grow. And, you know, that kind of goes to, leads to my question, is you were kind enough to kind of take some time out and talk with me and the mayor about some of the issues that we're having, and you discussed the safety overruns, I think it was runway 20, and how you said that, you know, we're not, it wouldn't lead to any new planes, larger planes that could come in, which, which is good to hear. Although I will say, I was walking down State Street this morning, and two jets did fly in this morning as I was walking down. But, so we're not, so I would say, as concerned as there would be bigger jets coming in, it's the increase in volume. And you had mentioned that with the longer runway, with the safety overrun, that they could have more fuel, which would lead, allow these flights to have longer trips. Is that correct?
That's a potential outcome of that, sure.
So, you know, my concern is that, you know, a reasonable assumption is, you know, you now have more destinations, increased traffic, which, again, is something that is not desirable by a lot of the residents that we hear. So, is there any way that we could, if the safety overruns are a necessity, how do, how do we, how are we assured that it's not going to lead to more flights coming in and out of the airport?
Well, it's not, it's not a given that if we install these safety overruns, we'll employ what are called declared distances, that would allow you to make use of that added pavement in certain configurations, meaning the direction of aircraft travel. That's certainly something that we would be evaluating at the time. Right now, we do not have this project funded. It will be an issue for us. Once we go to repave this runway, once the pavement needs to be addressed, the FAA will require us to address the safety overrun issue, and that is something that we would evaluate at that time, whether or not we would take advantage of the declared distances.
And how many airports do you oversee with the authority?
The authority owns and operates six airports, but we do have regulatory oversight over all of the airports in the state.
And I imagine that we are not unique. There's communities all across the state, I'm sure, that call up and you have to address them about noise and takeoffs and landings and all that. I mean, are there any communities that you could think of that having the same issue?
Well, I think, you know, at one time or another, I think every airport probably experiences a level of noise complaint. I will say that the level of complaint generated in this community is probably higher than usual, or higher than we see at other airports. But you have other locales that very much want the airport, for example, Wyndham Airport, Danielson Airport, two other general aviation airports that we operate. Waterbury Oxford is a very successful corporate airport that we operate out near Waterbury. So, it's a mix and match, but I think every one of those airports has generated some level of noise complaint at one time or another.
Okay, that's all for me. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Diggs?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight. My question has to do with the environmental standpoint. I'm pretty sure with your research and whatnot, you may have gotten reports back. But typically, trees help stop flooding, and we're talking about possibly 10 feet in the ground going around our lovely cove, which will ultimately increase flooding in that area. What, what has been the report come back on that? And has there been anything to even consider the possibilities of that?
Well, I can let Bob speak to those issues, but I think it's important to point out that where we're at in this project is, we're at a point where we want to start seeking permits, right? That's why some of these license agreements that we've asked the municipalities to sign are important, because we have to demonstrate to DEEP that we have the license agreement. But a lot of the things that you're talking about, we won't fully know until DEEP tells us, tells us what the conditions are of those permits. You know, for example, we already know DEEP will not allow us to cut the trees in any season other than the winter, right? Because they want the ground hard. But there could be any number of conditions that they're going to attach to that permit, but we can't get to that point because we haven't been able to apply for the permits. But, I don't know, Bob, is there anything you want to add in terms of, you know, the environmental considerations?
Sure. I can give just a little more update, and as, you know, as we've been progressing with the design, you know, Kevin said we're looking to get the permits in, but as we've progressed with the design, we've actually gone out in the field, we've looked at things like that, our designer's very qualified. And so, as we progress the planes, we change our design to where, I think, the first 25 feet off of the, off of the river, we're now only topping, you know, to alleviate things like that. In Weathersfield, we're only, we're only topping down by the cove there. So the majority of the area in there is only topping. The mechanized cutting is really right off the base of the dike, and not close to the water, specifically to take those concerns in. We also introduced snag cutting, too, which leaves an element of the tree for wildlife. So we have taken all those elements into concern. Like Kevin said, we are waiting to, you know, submit the permit to DEP, to see what they say on that. So, we are very careful of what we're going to be submitting on that project.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor?
Yeah, just, I just want to clarify something, and I think the mayor asked you, is, you said you do have ultimate authority to be able to close the airport, but you don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah. From a state standpoint, we, we have the authority to initiate a closure process. The ultimate authority, if you will, to determine whether or not an airport can close once it's taken federal grants is the FAA, right? So we'd have to meet those conditions that I talked about earlier, that the FAA would require the study to demonstrate that there's a higher and better use. That study would also have to demonstrate that the rest of the system in the state has the capacity to absorb the activity at Brainerd elsewhere. Those are the two primary things that they would look at. But from a state standpoint, yeah, as the owner and operator of the airport, we have a complete authority to initiate that process with the FAA.
And, but, but one of the things, I thought I heard you say is, but you don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. So-
That's correct.
The question I want to know is, so how much does it cost to do that?
Well, again, a lot of those costs are unknown. We know definitively that somewhere between 1.8 and $2 million would have to be paid back to the FAA. We have no idea of knowing what level of legal action would be undertaken by tenants to sue for return of their investment into the airport, as well as lost opportunity under some long-term leases that are there. And then the third component, although this should be external to the CAA, whoever acquires the property would have to pay fair market value, and that gets paid to the CAA, and we're required under federal requirements to reinvest that into the airport system here in the state.
So, thank you for that. So, one of the other statements I heard you say is, if, if the city in which you reside in doesn't support you, then you would probably have to start looking at ways of shutting that airport down, because you can't survive unless Hartford supports you.
Well, we certainly have to have a conversation about the future, what the future of the airport is going to be.
I understand. Hartford's already said they're not going to support you. So, can you talk a little bit about the plans you have in place to close it down?
We have no plan to close down the airport. I want to be very clear on that again tonight. The CAA is not initiating a closure of Hartford Brainerd Airport.
So what does the resolution from Hartford do?
Nothing. It's a non-binding resolution. They have no authority over the airport. And, you know, quite frankly, when you start talking about the tree issue, right, the fact that they have granted the state an easement, which accrues to the benefit of the CAA, I certainly hope we don't get to the point where we have to take legal action against the city of Hartford to compel them to follow their legal responsibility and take these trees down.
And is that what you mean by condemnation action?
Yes. Well, in, in the case of the city, I think it's, it's a little bit different. There's an existing easement. It would be action, legal action, that we would have to take to compel them to comply with the provisions of the easement. In the case of Weathersfield, for example, if Weathersfield indicated that they were not going to allow us to access the property to cut the trees, yes, that would be the only alternative we would have, is condemnation action.
And that is what you will pursue?
I'm not here tonight to say what we will or won't do. We're trying to work cooperatively with everyone.
Well, that, and on that, the subject of cooperation, I would say, is I think it's pretty clear that the people in Weathersfield want those flights not to go over our town. So, how do you cooperate with that, if earlier you just said we can't enforce that?
Well, again, as I said earlier, I think we are working, to the extent that we can, to try to be the best neighbor that we can. What I'm here tonight to tell you, to answer your question, is I do not control the airspace. I cannot tell an aircraft to fly in a particular direction or on a particular pattern. I don't have the authority to do that. We do our best to try to convince pilots to do that, in order to be a good neighbor. We put a lot of effort into that at the airport, but beyond that, there's very little that we can do.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pelletier?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that condemnation action. So if Weathersfield doesn't permit you on the Weathersfield-owned property, that one acre, to cut the trees, what would you be condemning? Like, would, can you clarify that?
Yeah. Under the state statutes, we, as a successor agency to the DOT, have authority under state law to condemn property to clear approaches.
So you would condemn that one acre that, of Weathersfield-owned property, or you would institute an action to?
Well, that's a potential. I'm not here tonight to threaten any action.
I know, I'm just trying to look-
I'm just trying to be very factual as to what a process could be if it was taken to its ultimate. We would like to work cooperatively with everyone involved, including the city of Hartford, as well as Weathersfield.
Okay. And, in that regard, what, I, I know that Hartford passed a resolution calling for the airport to be decommissioned, and you said the impact was nothing. If, if we were, the Weathersfield Town Council was to pass a resolution calling for the decommissioning of Brainerd Airport, what impact would that have?
I'm answering that in a legal sense. It has no impact. It's non-binding on the CAA. Certainly, we're always interested in hearing what the surrounding municipalities think about the airport and have to say about the airport. But from a legal standpoint, no, it's, it's non-binding on the CAA.
And I also wanted to follow up on, one of the steps you mentioned that the FAA would require if you were to begin the process of decommissioning the airport, was you would have to demonstrate there's a higher, better use of the property.
Right.
Do you know if that is a potential higher, better use, or if you actually have to have a viable proposal where, you know, this is the plan, and it's, you know, this is the higher, better use? Or is it just, you know, this is riverfront property, and potentially it could be something much better?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to answer for the FAA, but I would suspect that it doesn't have to be an actual use, but that it has to be a plan that's viable to bring the property to that level of development. I think one of the things that the FAA is concerned about, that study that I referenced earlier, that was undertaken by the state legislature back in 2016, very clearly determined that the airport was the highest and best use for the property. So that's a hurdle that has to be overcome. Why in 2016 was that the highest and best use, and now in 2021 there is a higher and better use?
Yeah, I read that report, and I was, I wanted to ask, has anything changed since it was issued in 2016 that would lead you to think if a similar report was done today, it would have a different result? Because I, you know, it did say that, you know, the airport's the highest best use, and if it were to close, the most likely reuse would be warehousing, due to its location with the trash plant and the wastewater treatment facility, and I guess the environmental cleanup that would be involved. But has anything changed on the ground that you think might have changed, changed the result if that study were done today?
Sure. Not that I'm aware of, but I, I think what it would require would be the city of Hartford to come forward with a definitive development plan that they would have to demonstrate is viable, and provided any level of development plan by the city of Hartford as to how they- viable, and provided any level of development plan by the city of Hartford as to how they would use the property.
Can I follow up on that quick? Can I just follow up on that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, with that being said, so, is it your intention to proceed as planned until Hartford comes up with a viable economic development plan for the land? So, if the FAA requires higher and better use, and Hartford's still in the planning phases, and they eventually come up with a plan that could show higher and better use as far as economic development, is it your intention to continue with some of the tree cutting and the runway extension?
Yes. We, you know, unfortunately, as I said earlier, this project was started back in 2017. We're way behind, and we have safety considerations. And if we're going to continue to operate the property as an airport, we have to move forward with action on these trees.
Just go ahead. Go ahead, Mayor.
I just have one more question. Has, have you accepted, or Brainerd Airport accepted, grants from the FAA since 2015, or is that the last year that you accepted federal grants?
Bob, do you recall? Off the top of your head?
I think we just did a mayor obstruction analysis for the, for the study.
Did you hear that? Just the obstruction analysis for this particular study that was a grant issued?
Okay. And if there was to be a closure, is, am I correct that you'd have to repay any federal grants that were received within the last 20 years?
Well, it depends on what the grant was received for. Each grant category has a useful life. So, what's left in terms of outstanding grants at the airport in terms of useful life is $1.8 million in that neighborhood.
Thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
There's, in our town, there's been discussion about a 180-day need to act. Is there any schedule that the trees have to be cut by a certain day, or begin work by a certain day?
Well, there is no specific date that's set, right? But, we already have trees representing obstruction, so there's already a safety consideration that we have to apply to this. And as I said before, it appears that deep will only allow us to cut in the winter. So, if these trees, if we don't start cutting this winter, you're essentially pushing it out yet again another year. It just really complicates the safety issue that we're trying to deal with. So, that may be what people are construing as those deadlines. If we ended up where we wanted to end up on this, we would be cutting the trees this winter, this coming winter season.
And then, one last question. Would, would the closure require repayment of any state investment? I understand there's an aviation school that was built maybe five years ago, at somewhere's around $11 million. Would somebody have to pay for that?
Well, they are one of our tenants at the airport, right? So, that's what I'm referring to by tenant action. You know, the major tenants there, you have the flight school, you have the fixed base operator that have investments into the property. Those would have to be reconciled. If it's a state entity, for example, the state police based their aviation assets out of Brainerd. In that case, I don't want to speak for the state police. I think they like operating out of Brainerd because it's a central location in the state, but those assets would have to be moved to another airport. So, is there really a financial aspect to that? Well, at the other airport locations, you're going to have to find hangar facilities to put the aircraft in. So, yeah, a lot of that would have to be duplicated at other locations. So, there's that cost to it.
Thank you very much for all your answers to my questions.
Councilman Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just going to clarify the one acre that you talked about. It's actually, isn't it actually 10 acres in Weathersfield, but nine of them happen to be under a Hartford land grant?
That's correct. That's what is in our land.
So, the cutting is 10 acres in Weathersfield, not just?
Well, it's nine and a half acres. That's what I said earlier.
Okay. And then, what, do you know what, you know, the last, either whether it's last year or the last few years, what is the deficit that the airport has run, you know, ballpark, not to the dollar, obviously?
Sure. It really depends on how you allocate some of the overheads, particularly personnel overhead. If you took it in its worst-case scenario, it's about a half a million dollar deficit. If you take it in its best light, where you would take those personnel allocations and allocate them to other portions of the system, because you're not necessarily going to terminate those employees, it's about $78,000.
$78,000?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Just a couple of follow-ups. These were great questions to ask, and I had a lot of them down in my notes. But going back to the nine and a half acres that are in Weathersfield property, you'd mentioned half of them would be topped, and this may be a question for Bob, I'm sorry. Half would be snagged, but the one acre in Weathersfield is, it's just being topped? It's not being mechanically?
Yeah, the one acre that Weathersfield owns is being topped. Just to, you know, clarify this point, right? There's nine and a half total acres located in Weathersfield. The town owns one acre of that nine and a half, right? So, the remainder is city of Hartford-owned property in Weathersfield. When you talk about the total nine and a half acres, roughly half is topped, and the other half is snag cut.
Okay. And, of that, I guess, eight and a half acres, that would fall under the 1959 easement by the city?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then, hearing from some residents, there are some conservancy land, conservancy property that is in there. I don't know where that is within the 36 acres.
Can you speak to that point, Bob?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I missed that, but it's kind of prior, it's in the same area off of the 20 approach, but it's prior to your own property on this side of kind of that little inlet that goes under the highway.
And would you need to get permission from the conservancy for that, or would that fall under the 1959 easement?
This would be city of Hartford.
Okay. And then, I read, I don't know if it was the master plan, but there are certain endangered species that are within those 36 acres. Are they protected at all?
Yeah, the whole, as part of the whole permitting process, we're dealing with the national diversity database people and DEP. We've done all our studies, and we're finalizing our documents with them. Yeah, we're taking care of all the species that have to be, that have to be in any name. The, I think there's a couple of different things there, but so far, no negative responses from NDDP at all.
Okay. And that's within DEEP?
Yes. There is a decision, and we're in DEEP.
So, they, DEEP has already studied, began the study for the sighting of where these trees would be either mechanically cut, topped, or snagged?
Yeah, we did initial, initial meeting with them. They walked the site. We presented them the plan, and they've asked us to do some further studies. We've done that. We're preparing our final document to hand back to them, and they'll give us their final answer.
Okay. And then, what would the license from the property owners grant CAA?
The license agreement that we're looking at right at this point was, would allow the CAA to enter the property, it allows to actually submit the permits. In order to submit the permits to DEP, we have to have all property owner consent. The other avenue was, we went with the license agreement, but there's also easement that we can obtain, that will be going forward after the license, that should take the easement over the property.
Okay. And then, who are the property owners that would require a license agreement with CAA to get in?
There's city of Hartford, city of Weathersfield, East Hartford, Goodwin College, and there is a nature's conservancy.
Great Meadows Conservancy.
Trustee that, yeah, I guess. Five, five of them.
Five. Of those five, have any signed lease, license agreements?
Two of them so far, yes.
Okay. Which two?
The college and the Great Hartford Meadows.
And then, you, I mean, it's all been touched on with these questions, you know, this is, it's not for, and it's a tricky way of saying, you know, you're not expanding the runway, but in fact, you are expanding the runway. You're doing it through a safety, you know, 300 feet on either end. You're not actually, if memory serves me correct, when you said it was a 4,417-foot runway, the runway for pilots to land on that will still be a 4,417-foot runway. I mean, you're not, you're not telling them now that we have a 5,000-foot runway in?
No, I mean, it, it's a difficult concept to get your arms around, right? When you talk about declared distances. As I said, if you want to talk about the two runway ends that impact Weathersfield, right, you have runway two arrivals and runway 20 departures. Departures fly out over Weathersfield, the arrivals fly in over Weathersfield. In the case of the safety overrun for runway two, those arrivals, we actually have to shorten the runway by 300 feet, because you have to keep in mind that the thresholds are fixed, that location is fixed. So, even though we're extending the runway on that side, I can't push the threshold back, because the dike represents an obstruction. So, I have to take the 300-foot on the other side, where we don't have the ability to acquire property over there, right? So, you actually shorten the runway in that configuration. Where you get benefit, if you call it that, from the safety overrun, is on runway 20 departures, okay? Because you have that fixed threshold location, but now, at the end of the runway, you have those safety overrun areas, okay? You can use that in the context of calculation of takeoff run. And that's what I'm referring to, is you the ability not to increase the size of the aircraft, but to increase potentially payload. And, you know, I'm trying to remember these numbers right off the top of my head, but in the context of the usable runway that you gain, there are two lagoons that we are working with MDC right now, right? If we obtain one of those lagoons, it gives you roughly, I think it's 187 feet extra takeoff run. Not a whole lot. If you acquire the other lagoon, I think it gives you 500, a little bit over 500 feet of additional takeoff run. So, that's what I'm trying to get across. It's not, it's not, you know, we just added 1,000 feet onto the runway, we can now change the class of aircraft. It's, this is a safety project for the safety overruns. It does have that byproduct, okay? We don't necessarily have to utilize declared distances. As I said, at the time we move forward with this project, if we do, we'll make that determination if we think there's value to doing it.
But again, larger aircraft would not be permitted to land, therefore, they wouldn't be permitted to take off?
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's a correct statement.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin and his team? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming tonight. Like I said, I think Bonnie's going to have a presentation on the
Thank you.
...economic development, but if you guys would stay, you know, listen, we would appreciate it.
I'm going to make this brief, because we do have a lot of people in the audience I know who wish to speak. To members of the council, you have the report in front of you of what the projects and where we are with the economic development in the community. Recently completed projects is, we have a new tough shed on Berlin Turnpike where Pet Supply Plus was. Popeye's Restaurant is on Silas Dean. Laura's Labyrinth is on Silas Dean. Grand Cafe is now on Silas Dean. Greater New York Insurance is open. Shoppers World is on the Berlin Turnpike. And the plans that are under review and heading to P&amp;Z is Boondoggle Beer on Main Street, the former Carmen Anthony's Restaurant is, now has a new restaurant that the plans are being reviewed. Moonus Pizza on Main Street, and Potastic Dog Grooming on the Silas Dean. The EDIC, oops, I missed some.
Oh, yeah, second page. Oh, yeah, that was just.
Sorry. Blackbird House Wellness Center on Main Street, and then Chips Restaurant, they want to, thank you, Mary, an outside dining patio. Also, the P&amp;Z is going to be considering a temporary moratorium on cannabis establishments, and the hearing is scheduled for tomorrow night. Economic Development Commission did do a business survey. We didn't get a large amount of responses back, and we're still continuing to try to get more businesses to do. So, if you are a business, please make sure you fill this out. It's on the website. But the ones we have received are very positive, very upbeat, and some great, great suggestions for the Silas Dean. And I can share, if I haven't already, with the council the results, but we're still trying to get some businesses to continue doing that. And with that, I think I will take questions.
Well, I think Denise Bradley had sent that survey out. I don't know if everybody on the council had received it.
Oh, excellent. Good.
Yep, we did see it. Any questions or comments for our acting town planner, town manager, Bonnie Therrien on this?
Not a police, acting police.
Matt, Councilman Forrest, sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. Two, we've heard about the Artisanal Burger Company for a while now, and wondering if there was any update specifically on that project.
That I don't, but I can easily find out.
And next, the Auction House on Church Street. A lot of action, I see, happens to be on my way to work, the pizza oven on the left. Is there a plan, is there a plan for that? Is that?
I did hear there was a company that was taking a hard look at it, but I don't think there's anything concrete or any plans, but must somebody else know something?
I don't think.
Yeah. Yeah, they're in the
Hi-yo.
Yeah, I believe they're in the process with the architecture right now, developing a three-phase plan.
So, they haven't actually gotten here. So, there's just discussions with the staff?
Yeah, I think they're, they're planning on submitting phase one, if I'm not mistaken.
What are we thinking here?
I believe, don't quote me, but they'd like to do an office, so it's a financial office upstairs and a commissary kitchen, so Square Peg could do all their pizza dough out of the back there, before they put in the brewery and the pizza restaurant, Square Peg.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. And I believe, I don't know if you had mentioned it, Sally's was also looking at the Borden. I believe they've, well, prefer to, our EDIC liaison.
Yeah, and current tenant of the Borden, so I hear their construction every morning. So, they're pretty much, they're, I know that all, all units at the Borden, the commercial space is rented out, even the third unit, if you're looking at it from the Silas Dean to the right of Keller Williams, that's, I believe they signed an LOI. They're waiting just to finish the plumbing, and a few other things at Sally's, and they're going to begin work on that, so.
Okay. And there's a new owner of the Masonic Temple on the corner of Main and Church Street?
New tenant.
No, just new tenant?
Yeah, just new tenant.
They didn't buy it? Okay.
No.
Oh, and lastly, there's a new part-time person that started today. Joya McGrave started as our part-time economic development director.
Great. A lot going on. Very good. Okay, moving on from the economic report, we do have public comment. There is no hearings tonight. General comment from the public, I will do it as I did. Mr. O'Connor? Oh, yeah. The reminder for those who are new to the coming is that, please state your name, address, and we do limit to a five-minute, but you do have five minutes at the end as well.
Thank you. Rob O'Connor, 180 Main Street, Weathersfield, also known as Runway 180. I didn't plan to speak, but I do have a jack over my house now and then. I just wanted to ask the council, they would, they consider a new paradigm, not the noise abatement, and not the problem of planes or homes as a noise problem, but it's a safety issue. And I think as long as it stays a noise issue, and as long as people talk about how many calls came in, nothing will ever get done. But I think if we look at this, tonight's presentation mentioned the word "safety" only for the pilots landing at Brainerd. They never even mentioned safety for people whose homes get flown over. And we see the rash of private plane crashes. I mean, God forbid, and hopefully, they'll never happen, but there's a safety issue when I can read the plane's numbers from my grill flipping a hamburger. There's, it's not just people taking an optional path, they're It's not just people taking an optional path, they're joyriding over our town. I would like to know why a pilot would feel safe flying over our trees, but they don't feel safe flying over these trees. These have to get cut down. So I also would like to address that, Councilor Forrest, your question about is there a way to tell who's flying over our houses? There is. I know the gentleman said, "No, there's no way." Get the app called FlightAware, watch the map, click the plane, it tells you the owner. I've gone after and emailed planes saying, "Please don't fly over my house." The town thing, I've called, I'm not one of the 88%, but I don't believe in like call-shaming people who would just want to let them know that there's planes flying too close to our homes and our historic properties and our church, the church steeple. I mean, someday that disaster could be prevented by just getting the people who fly over the town to fly a safer flight path, a safer, not noise, like the noise is not the problem. Planes make noise, everybody knows that, but planes crash into people and buildings, and that's the reason, the reason I'd like planes pushed to the river is to avoid the accident, not the noise really. So I would recommend changing that committee from a noise abatement committee to a safety committee, and it's an economic, potential economic injury to Weathersfield. Safety, I think, should be the number one issue. It's not the number one issue for the CAA, only the safety of the pilots coming in and leaving Brainerd, not us, but it would be a good if they switched it around. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Mrs. Keen. I hope you're well rested from a very eventful three-day weekend.
Not yet, not yet. Hopefully tonight, if we can get done in time. I was planning to talk about some of the same things that I addressed the last time, and safety was one of my issues. Brainerd has had two major accidents in the area in the length of time that I've lived, maybe the last 30 years. One was a pilot that missed the runway and went into the river or onto the shore of the river and killed himself. He could have hit one of our buildings, one of our homes. The other was in East Hartford where a student pilot, a student wanted to commit suicide and the plane went down right outside of Pratt Whitney Aircraft. That seems major to me, but, so I agree with the safety aspect. And I just want to address some of the things that were brought up today instead of going through my litany. First of all, we're supporting a financially failing business at Brainerd Airport. You talked about a fuel surcharge at Bradley. Well, I believe that I pay a fuel surcharge when I buy a ticket for any travel to any place, so I think that that's subsidizing the Brainerd Airport at the same time. You mentioned that there were 49,000 flights last year over Weathersfield. This is a number that I can certainly agree with because they're over my house constantly. And, you know, it's not just noise, the jets come up so fast, and it's so frightening when you hear that first initial roar, and that's what it is. It's a roar when it goes over the house, and it's very, very frightening to me at times. The noise complaints, I agree with Councilman Hills' comment about people have given up. I was one that used to call all the time. I would call 10 times a day. And again, because when we go to these meetings, and I've been going to these meetings longer than probably most of the people that go, probably 30 years, and nothing changes, absolutely nothing. They sit there and they placate us with these terms and, you know, "We're going to try to do better." I would like to know, have any of you from the CAA actually seen that sign that is at the end of the runway that the pilots are supposed to read just as they're taking off? Have you seen the sign? It's like so scattered, it's "Be a good neighbor here," and then a picture of trees and a picture of this. If it just said, "Do not fly over Old Weathersfield," it would be much better. But it's so chaotic that nobody, I wouldn't want them to be reading that as they're taking Weathersfield is a community that is embracing tourism. If you've been in on Main Street in Old Weathersfield, you can see the joy and the camaraderie, the businesses are doing well, people of Weathersfield and Hartford are enjoying our environment. It really gets tampered down when these planes are coming in, and as Rob said, you can read the numbers on them, and that includes the jets. They are so low. Somebody from the airport commission, the noise abatement committee one time, who actually has a relationship with pilots and all, he brought up one time that he had seen a jet that looked like it was going to hit the steeple of the church. And I know that that's what the pilots are looking for, is the steeple, and that guides them right in. So I ask you, please, let us build our tourism in a more sane environment. And, you know, if you were having a wedding, if you had paid for a wedding to be held at one of our venues in Old Weathersfield and a jet came flying through, you would really wonder whether you had paid good money for that. I think that I will stop with that. I really cringe to think of an economic driver that the airport could be for the city of Hartford. I can't imagine how horrible that would be for the community and especially for Weathersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Keen.
May I talk?
Please.
Hi, my name's Sarah, 14th State Street. I'm the proud 82% person who calls all the time, and I plan to continue to call all the time. Everyone else is sick of calling, so it's my turn and I will continue to call. I'd like you to listen to this. That's a jet going over Main Street. The planes, you say they're not going to get any bigger? That's big enough. So how many, I mean, I know he can't answer my question, but how many more of these are we going to get on a daily basis? Was it Kevin, you said two today? I don't know how many. Sometimes it's three, sometimes it's four. It's horrible. I don't have my glasses, so I can't read very well. Oh, you say that you're responsive? I say you're not. I've called hundreds of times. I said, "Please call me back." I don't know who I'm supposed to direct this to. I get no callback. I have pictures of the planes, I have photographs, I've written stuff down, nothing. I get no callbacks at all. So if you're really committed to making a difference, I would think someone would call me. What else? Oh, I think I shared with you last time gasoline got dropped on my car when I first moved in, and I didn't know what the process was, and when I called, they said, "Well, what was the number?" Well, like, I don't know. I couldn't see the number. I was told, "Well, then there's nothing we can do." It was either gasoline or oil that was dropped on my car. So I say, "No, you're a horrible neighbor. You're a horrible, horrible, terrible neighbor. I will continue to call. I really, really urge you to work with us to make things better, however that is, whether it's supporting decommissioning, whether it's getting more involved in the noise complaint and seeing what can be done." I also ask them to please, whoever goes to the meetings, the noise complaint meetings, to please research other airports and find out what they've done that's been successful. I hear nothing. So I think they're horrible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Caitlin. I live at 83 Old Common Road, obviously Weathersfield, Connecticut. I'm somewhat new to this conversation. I really appreciate everything that everyone's contributed here. I have a couple of questions. They're probably, I don't know who would have answers for me. I would imagine, since we've heard so much about the cost of decommissioning Hartford-Brainerd, that most of the surrounding towns probably couldn't handle the initial costs, never mind all the contingent lawsuits, right, that could come up. And I'm curious, in addition to those costs, how much the surrounding towns or whether it was just the city of Weathersfield, how much money they put into the development of Hartford-Brainerd that they would now lose? And whether it would be more efficient to create, again, committees that are more targeted to these issues we're hearing about here in the meeting, whether it's noise, whether it's safety, so that we're able to keep the airport open in a way that's hopefully affordable? All of the environmental issues, I would imagine, I would hope, that D is doing a very good job at creating the policies and the reviews for keeping everything environmentally friendly. So, I mean, if the conversation of decommissioning is happening over and over and over again, and it's not getting passed, there must be a reason. Maybe it's purely economic, maybe it's historical, maybe it's both. But there's got to be a middle ground as well to how we can keep people safe, how we can keep noise down, because there are educational initiatives in place at this airport. I'm going to forget the name of the organization that does so much of their flight training at Hartford-Brainerd, and they would have to be moved, I would imagine, most likely to Bradley, and that would also have to be funded somehow, the transition of materials, and so many things would have to be moved. So there's got to be a happy medium, and I know that that might be very idealistic of me, and I apologize, but that might be something to consider. So thank you.
Mr. Young, I saw you first.
Robert Young, 20 Capewell Road. I don't have a problem with Brainerd Airport staying where it is. I think it employs a lot of people. I think it's a good economic generator of revenue. I didn't know how the finances were for Brainerd, and I didn't know how they were financed when there was a deficit, you know, by the fuel cost, but I would have thought the fuel cost would have gone to the state of Connecticut to help pay for all the other bills. But I also believe that, I didn't believe we should be involved with Hartford. I've spoke about this before, and they should be on their own. This is their airport. I understand their airplanes are flying over our town, and it's sometimes low and making a lot of noise, and somehow they have to take, they have to take the bull by the horns and make sure those planes fly elsewhere, over the water. Maybe what they should do is they should be taking off from the south part of the airport heading north, over the airport and over Hartford. Maybe that's the direction that the airplanes should be running as they're taking off and coming in, instead of taking off over Weathersfield or coming in over Weathersfield. I mean, it's their problem. It's their money, obviously they're collecting something, they're getting something. And if it's decommissioned, I think it was mentioned, it's going to be a tremendous amount of money of, people need to be reimbursed for the improvements they have made on the properties as a fair market value, and I think it's just going to cost way, way too much for us. Us. When I say "us," I mean the state of Connecticut taxpayers, as we all know. The city of Hartford lives on state of Connecticut taxpayer monies, not on their residents' money. Their residents are taxed at a much different rate than the rest of us, they don't pay as much as, we're contributing, I think what I'm trying to say, a tremendous amount of money. If they condemn the, if they shut the property down and there's a big lawsuit, we, the taxpayers throughout Connecticut, would be responsible for that money because that's how Hartford is taken care of. So I really want to see us avoid that kind of a situation, and I would recommend that you back off on that, on this resolution. And in meeting this resolution, there's things in here that are so wrong. I don't think the citizens of Weathersfield really stand for a number of issues in here. I think you talk about asthma, respiratory illnesses, you mentioned in here about ozone. You're talking about general average airports. Brainerd is a tiny little thing that doesn't generate anything like the numbers I'm seeing here, because this is like the big airports like Bradley and JFK and so forth and so on. So I think this piece of paper needs to be revamped. I think you should get a new person on this. The one that's currently doing it has been, he's done a poor job on other projects for us and cost us a lot of money, and I think that we should really back out of this. We should not be responding to Hartford. Let Hartford take care of their own, and we should make Hartford stop their airplanes from coming over us. Have them turn around and take off and go in that direction towards them. They're the ones who got the airport. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Hayes, I saw your hand.
Patrick Hayes, 451 Main Street. And thank you, Mr. Young, these are some interesting points. I know we have raised them. I've worked, volunteered with the noise abatement committee for a long, long time, since the end of the 80s, and there really has been a lot of work on the part of the airport management to try to address the problems. But the problems continue, they really don't get fixed, and it's still up to the discretion of the pilot. About the ownership of the 201 acres that Brainerd is on, the city of Hartford has voted to decommission in the intention of getting that 201 acres back. So they must think that they own it, and there is not a prior claim on it. So I really would like to know more about that. Going up in order, more calls to the noise complaint line. My first point was, "Oh, my neighbors stopped." More people have told me, "I'm tired of calling and not getting any responses." So to the issue of the larger jets that are already flying here, the larger jets, especially the ones with more and more passengers, customers who are not pilots have to stay straight. They have to be coming in from the south over my house and landing down. They're not comfortable with passengers coming in over the river. Once we increase the runway safety area, we can have more of those, we can have more of them with more passengers or more load, more gas to take off to farther distances. So to Kevin Hill's point, we are asking for an increase of some sort, even without doing anything else on that. The most annoying thing for us is the training and the students, and there are always, you know, a lot of the student pilots are going out over the river, but a lot of them are just repeatedly, again and again and again, driving up, you know, plowing on, coming south over our street, Main Street, time and again. So last time we met, we were humoring, humorously referring to the east side of Weathersfield as having our share of troubles. Well, we would like to get rid of the airport so at least we can get quieter and make Old Weathersfield a very more inviting tourist destination. We have had to live with the sewage treatment plant, the trash-to-energy plant. We are the neighborhood, the east side, closest to the highway, so we are looking for some, you know, better balance in our lives, and this was an opportunity. So I had a whole bunch of questions about the tree cutting, but I'm going to take them over to Hartford because I think that may be where the action is. Thank you for your time, thank you for, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Ms. Cohen.
Deborah Cohen, 73 Church Street. I just would like I just would like to make three quick points. If I understand correctly what I heard, the pilots who are coming into the Brainerd Airport kind of have a choice about what approach they want to take. Does anybody know if this is true of any other airports? Are pilots given the information that they can choose their way into airports? I have no experience with this, but I find that really hard to believe. Surely, there must be some organization or some individual somewhere who can specifically state that pilots are supposed to go over the water, they're supposed to go over the river, and that they don't have this namby-pamby choice of avoiding that if they choose. We were told that the CAA has no authority to do anything about that. I would like to ask our town council to take the steps to find out who does. Simple. I don't think it's reasonable to live with "please do this" when so many people's concerns are being affected, when actually one official flight pattern into the airport should and must be established. A sign that says "please don't do this," eh, not so much. And the other point, or the other ask that I have, is that regardless of what happens here, tonight I heard some of you asking about the effectiveness of signing a resolution, and the answer came back was that, sir, if I'm quoting you correctly, it has no, it has no legal standing. Basically, it's meaningless. I'm going to ask you please not to be bullied into thinking that standing up for what you think is right and making a statement isn't worth your time. Very few activists will go into a situation thinking that because we raise our voices, we're automatically going to get what we want. We're always told, "Don't stand on, don't stand on the corner and tell us what you want, because it's not going to make a difference. Don't march, because it won't make a difference. Don't write letters and don't do all of the things that people might do to have their voices heard, because it won't make a difference." It's a starting point. So, I'm asking you all, excuse me, regardless of the outcome of whatever happens with this airport, please stand by what you think is the right thing to do and sign the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Councilman Martino, in the back corner. And Dan, yes.
Deputy Mayor.
Former Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony Martino, 374 Highland Street in Weathersfield. I think it's appropriate, today I got my copy of the Hartford Business Journal, and there was an article on Mr. Dillon, talking about Bradley Field. And out of the six regional airports in New England, including Bradley, we've got the second lowest, was it lending fees, some kind of a fee, out of all, with Reliant being the cheapest. So, the more he can keep his costs down and lower that fee, the more flights he can get in and out, and he's looking to bring more business here. So consequently, he's told you tonight that if we close the airport, we got to pay back 1.8 to 2 million dollars. He's not telling you how much he's paying every year for the deficit to keep the thing running. Take that into consideration, the money he's got to spend to cut the trees, the money he's got to extend, to extend the runways and all that, I'm sure we're going to get pretty close to that 1.8 million dollar number. And you're saying that there's no economic plan for that. When I sat up here on the dais, Senator Fonfera came forward, he's a big proponent for closing Brainerd. He had a plan that they were working on for the city to bring economic development in, to bring either an industrial park or something in. I can't remember the plans, I'm getting on an age so I don't remember all that stuff, but I think if they find that, that could give him what he needs to get a waiver from the FAA and save that money and take care of that. So, I think the monetary costs for closing are going to be minimal, if at all. And I think if you guys sign the resolution supporting Hartford on closing the field, you're showing regional support for it, and Senator Fonfera represents Hartford and Weathersfield, it will give him more ammunition, representing two towns, to get something going, to get the field closed, and, I mean, the people are coming forward, telling you tonight about safety issues, noise issues, the concern for saving the trees and everything. Just think back, two years ago, Veterans Day, my closing words to you before I left the dais, six of you were here, three have been appointed since, so I'll say, again, so you know. You all got here through a political process. When you walk through that door and sit at that dais, do what's best for the taxpayers of Weathersfield. These people are coming to you with a concern, take their concerns into consideration. Vote for closing Brainerd. It will help our state, it will increase economic development, because if he can bring in more flights at Bradley, that's going to help us. If Hartford can take over that land and put in an industrial park or whatever in there, that will increase the tax base, which will limit the subsidy the state has to give the city of Hartford, which Mr. Young is concerned about. So, it's a win-win for everybody. So, my plea to you people tonight is uniformly vote the resolution in to close the airport. Brainerd has no teeth, but it'll give our state senator an ability to have some teeth to move forward, to do the job for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Mead.
Claire Mead, 373 Main Street. There's actually not a lot to say after he said that, but I'm going to make a few points. It's a small airport, it's getting smaller. Forty-nine thousand operations in 2020, and that actually was not impacted by COVID, because I've been on the Noise Commission for a long time, and I actually learned a lot, thank you, Barry. COVID brought people back into the skies, because that's something they could do. So, that's not a low number because of COVID, that's a pretty average number. So, it's a small airport, and it's getting smaller. It's getting smaller because the towns surrounding are creating unstable environments that is driving away investment. So, when Mr. Dillon talks about that the Hartford resolution is non-binding and has no effect, it may have no legal effect, but it does have the effect of, again, pushing away investment, which is the way they'd like to grow it. So, it's a small airport, and it serves a pretty small audience. You know, it serves folks who fly in and out, it has a relatively small repeat audience, by which I mean that there are people who come in and then go to somewhere else. But if you look at the group that actually house their planes there and hangars, it's relatively small. One thing I've learned in being on the commission, the committee, is that the proportion of the types of airplanes have changed over the years. It's canted away from the private, small plane owner, and towards flight schools and leased jets. So, the Aetnas and the big companies don't own their own jets, they lease the jet space. What we know about the jets is that they fly on instruments and they fly straight down. They have risk managers, all you great lawyers, and I can say that with impunity, because I have one at home, all you great managers, lawyers, excuse me, these jets come in and they fly straight down Main Street. So, you have an even smaller number of local people in our town who are specifically affected by Brainerd Airport in terms of that they're using it. So, what are the reasons to change this airport? I have to say in honesty, I live on Main Street, they come right over my house, it's very loud, and I wish that us all standing up and telling you about that is going to make a difference, but I honestly don't think that 30 or 40 households is enough. What adds to that are two points. One is a regional consideration, and in answer to Ms. Pelletier's question about things that have changed since the 2016 plan, the trash-to-energy plant is going offline, if it's not already. And so, the Hartford, so Brainerd becomes a linchpin to regional development that could be catalytic for not just Weathersfield and Hartford, but for the area. It's not going to happen short term, it has to be planned for. But I was reminded this afternoon about something that we all have been planning for and working towards that's beginning to come to fruition, and that leads me to my second point. So, the first point of, in addition to all of what you've heard about people and living, and I live it, I can tell you those stories, Sarah lives two houses down from me, that's what I hear too. But in addition to that, in addition to the regional piece, there's what's going on in Old Weathersfield. I don't know if you all have been down there the last couple of weekends, actually, if you don't live there, you probably didn't come down, because you probably couldn't get down. It was masses of people, right? I mean, it was just people moving. It's great. We've got restaurants coming in, young families want to be there, it's what we've all been working a really long time for. And when you're in that environment and a jet, because it's a jet, with passengers comes screaming down Main Street, it kills that ambiance. If you are trying to sell a wedding party at Webb Dean Stevens and the barn, because I did this, my daughter got married and we looked at the Webb Barn, and we're standing there, and a plane goes overhead. Now, we know what that is, but a prospective client would leave. We have people sitting out eating restaurants, all of the things that we've tried to have happen, young families listening to this noise. So, there is certainly the quality of life that we have, and that's not something to be sneezed at. There's a regional argument, and there's a local argument, in terms of the time and energy and money that this town has put into developing Old Weathersfield. Just finally, I want to echo what's been said before. It may be a non-binding resolution, but it gives others the chance to take the next step up, which is obviously to work with the legislature and see what happens. It's not going to be a fast solution. I've heard as long as 10 years been talked about to close an airport, but it's a planning stage, and it's a step, and we are the first beginning steps in doing that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to comment? And again, this public comment portion is on all matters, not just the airport. Mr. Sullivan.
My name's Kevin Sullivan, I'm at 79 Wright Road, Weathersfield. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, I would like to address the agenda item DEEP Trails Grant. The, I'd like to say that the title is maybe a bit of a misnomer, it's actually, the grant would be for a study. It would not actually construct anything, so if there's any concern that something is about to get constructed by, as a result of a grant, it's actually for a study. It would connect Riverfront Recapture with Weathersfield, which I think would be a wonderful transportational and recreational asset for the town. If Rocky Hill also participates, it would connect all the way potentially to the Ferry State Park. And Judy Keen mentioned tourism earlier, I think it would be great to have a connection to, between Old Weathersfield and the Colt Heritage Park, right across the street from Riverfront Recapture. So, I strongly encourage you to consider voting to have the town apply for that grant. A unique thing about that, not a unique, but an unusual thing about that grant, is it does allow applicants to apply for funds to study, and that's what Weathersfield needs, Weathersfield and Hartford, Rocky Hill, for this project would need, is a study first, and there are very few grant opportunities that will fund a study, usually they just fund construction. So, this would be a great opportunity, and one that doesn't come very often, so I urge you to support that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Greenblatt.
Cindy Greenblatt, 35 Broad Street. I wanted to thank Mr. Dillon for coming forward, and I wanted to thank him for speaking very honestly, and your questions elicited a lot of the answers that I think that you needed to hear, and I just wanted to make sure that we all heard them, because Mr. Dillon said it straight out, and Mr. Pelletier did too, always a gentleman, I've served on a committee with him for a long time. It's 100 days until the tree cutting is going to start, they have to do it in the winter, they have the plans, they have the diagrams, they know the trees, they want to start this winter. So, we've got that 100 days that we know. They're federally obligated to do it, it is required of them. The airspace that the pilots use is also designated. I brought two maps, sorry for the printer, but I'll just give them here for you to see. And you can see that those planes legally, rightly, come right over Main Street and line up with runway 220. I mean, that's what they're allowed to do. They can be asked to go out over the river, and they are, but that's a voluntary request, they cannot be fined, it is not wrong of them even not to do it. They are flying on the correct flight path when they do that. I thought Councilwoman Pelletier asked a great question about the 2016 report. That might have been the only dodge I heard and the answer, but I think with that report to be done today, we'd get a very, very different answer. We have seen that we've changed the way we work and live, companies are working remotely, there was virtually no business traffic coming into Brainerd at the last meeting I attended, according to the report of the airport manager. So, I think we would get a very different read on that work done today. The extending the runway, I hope you heard that last answer and it didn't get lost. When the runway is extended, there would be the option to change the designation of that runway and the planes. It's not planned right now, but it's possible, and from the CAA's own report for the planning and development of Brainerd, and I believe I shared this with several of you, this is the quote, "To expand the runway to 5,000 feet to allow for corporate jets, charters, and to satisfy insurance requirements." So, you got the answers, and I think you know we've spoken about this before, we're right at a juncture, very honestly, the director of the CAA said, "We either deforest and expand, or we move in another direction," and that other direction is what benefits Weathersfield and the community we live in. It's going to be of a regional benefit, I feel certain, and I hope that you have the courage and that you will unanimously act on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks wanting to comment? Jim.
Jim Woodworth, 33 Mill Street, but formerly of Five River Road. I wanted to beg to differ with some of the people who said the airplanes are always flying over their house, whereas at Five River Road, when I lived there, they lined up on the church steeple, and it came between the chimneys at Five River Road before landing. Occasionally, one of those big planes with the big headlights would light up the bedroom on their way down. Anyway, I'd be curious to know what the percentage of people of flights that follow the noise abatement would be, because all these years we've been raising kind of unrealistic expectations that you could make a difference, and maybe you have, but we wouldn't know it, because so many, as Ms. Greenblatt said, they're going the way they need to. But I guess I'm also curious to know if they are using leaded or unleaded fuel at Brainerd, because we used to have leaded fuel coming down 91, and our kids were breathing that, and now the only leaded fuel, I think, is at the airport. I'd be curious to know if they have the option of unleaded fuel, especially for the small airplanes that fly back and forth, the student pilots. But I'm also interested in the cutting. I was pleased to hear that there would be 25 feet of topping on the shore, and some snag cutting, and then some closer in, maybe some cutting at ground level. But, and I know that, I think you, I know you were talking about the Weathersfield part of the Follibrooke Nature Area, and I wondered if you were also talking about going north from the Weathersfield line along the shore of the river for the rest of the, whatever that other runway landing is, the east-west one, and also at the other end of, I can never figure out which is 2 and 2-0, but anyway, the one that goes north. And if there was going to be a similar setback from the river for topping only, and then snag cutting, or how that might work out. So, we could talk some other time. Where I'm with the Great Meadows Conservation Trust, we plan a winter walk on January 16th that goes out to the river. And some of these people have been out there to see what it is, but maybe other people would be interested. I don't know when you're actually going to start cutting, but I'd love to have a, you know, firsthand, be able to see what trees you're cutting and what trees you aren't. But I'm glad to hear there's a snag cut involved, and if there's a topping 25 foot in from the river, that's great. Some places along the river, there isn't more than 25 feet. I don't know exactly where the north end, you know, cutting on the north end starts and whatnot. I'd be curious to see that. So anyway, thank you for coming, and maybe we can arrange a visit and invite others if they'd like to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen, public? Yes, sir, in the back corner.
Paul Brady, 1618 Church Street. I would like to say thanks to my neighbors for all being here tonight, and thank you for council, for listening to us. Unlike many of my neighbors, I have a different port. I have a different background. Most of you guys don't know, but my undergrad is aviation management. I studied airports, I've flown. That being said, I personally think that there can be, there could be a middle ground here. We heard a neighbor said, the way the airplanes lined up over Main Street, it's not coincidental, that's what the instruments read, and unfortunately, that's what happened. I believe, well, when I took my first flight lesson at Brainerd, the flight pattern was 1,000 feet. Am I correct in saying that? I think it's probably still the same. Maybe there could be a meeting as far as the state goes with the FAA on changing the flight pattern as far as height. Currently, I think every jet by now has gone over my house. I've stood in my backyard and I've seen them, right? But to say that only these small airplanes are flying at a low altitude that could potentially be dangerous, isn't really so true, because I have been outside and I've seen much larger jets that are at Bradley in a hold pattern, and I could tell you it was in a hold pattern because of the numerous times it's circled. And at the end of the day, if a pilot makes a mistake, terrible things could happen. When you leave your house and you leave from Connecticut and you go to, what'd it be, LaGuardia, JFK, your planes fly over houses. They fly over my family's houses. A lot of things could go wrong. There's a flight path right over many houses in a densely populated area. So, to say that planes flying over houses at times, yes, there's a safety risk, and in everything, there's a safety risk. But there must be a middle ground to this. That airport could be a huge benefit to Connecticut economically. I don't think Hartford has done a very good job in selling that. And the state could probably help with that too, in some cases, but they're not. There's the other problem there too. If you close the airport, whatever federal funding that airport has received, and if it needs to be paid back, who is going to foot that bill? Everyone's now sitting here saying, "Yeah, let's close it." But when it comes down to it, we all probably are going to be sitting at the table saying, "Well, our taxes are going up," because Hartford's not going to pay it by themselves. We all know that. And it's going to be thrown on us. And that means that I'm going to have to adjust some way in my household to help to foot that bill. So, the reality is, I think there must be, there can be a middle ground, economically speaking. There are flight schools there now, right? Currently, there are two flight schools there. For everyone that, I mean, that's an economic driving, that's economics right there. A lot of those pilots will be going into airlines that are coming out of Bradley. So, it's two ways. You can't only look at it from on a one lens. That's not fair. Not for the people that have their businesses there, not for those young potential pilots that are looking to be commercial pilots that are training there. So, do I really want planes to be flying over my house? Not at that altitude. I think the altitude could probably be adjusted as far as the pattern goes. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Anybody else wishing to comment? Mr. Zaleski. I thought I saw you come in, and I didn't see you back there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, my name is Mike Zaleski, 23 Black Birch Road. I'm here tonight representing my employer, Riverfront Recapture. I'm the president and CEO of the organization. I urge you, the council, to support the submission of the DEEP grant, Trails Grant, that is in front of you, to study the feasibility of a connection from our park, Charter Oak Landing in the South Meadows of the city of Hartford, to Old Weathersfield and possibly beyond. We are close to breaking ground on an extension to Windsor, to the north of our park system, and it's realistic to think if we were able to connect all of these trail systems along the Connecticut River, we could conceivably have a bike trail, pedestrian trail from Windsor all the way down to Weathersfield, connecting two of the oldest towns in the state. I urge the council to proceed with this grant application. As Mr. Sullivan said, this is merely a feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight? Well, if the council will indulge me real quick, I know there's a lot that we want to say during council reports, council comments, and obviously our town managers' report, but there are some folks waiting in the back of the room tonight. So, if you would, you know, or if you allow me, I would like to move the agenda item, if I bring it up real quick, under Other Business 3C, the naming of one of our Little League fields at Mill Woods on behalf of Ryan Costello, a former resident of Weathersfield. I would like to move that up to our next item before general comments. Question's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Okay. We will take up, and I see Kathy Bagley is here from Parks and Rec. Sorry to put you on the spot, but we've got this item before us, and I know a lot of folks from town and beyond are here patiently waiting.
Good evening. I'm here tonight, it's a pleasure actually for me to be here tonight, to bring to you a recommendation from the Park and Rec Advisory Board to name our Mill Woods Lighted Little League Field in memory of Ryan Costello. The park board took this up at their meetings and unanimously voted to recommend to council to name this field. The field was installed and built in 2009, and it's, we've always called it the Mill Woods Lighted Field, Little League Lighted Field. So it doesn't have a name, and I think the recommendation that came from our Weathersfield Little League organization to name it in memory of Ryan was a great idea, because we'd always been waiting for what would be the right opportunity to name the lighted field that Little League uses. So this is really a real pleasure to be here tonight to make the recommendation to you from the park board. And a little brief history on Ryan and his career. He's been a Weathersfield resident and played baseball all his life. I could go into, I know we submitted to you a brief history on his baseball career in Weathersfield and through professional ball, but I think the neatest thing that they brought to my attention was that when we opened the field, he was the first person as a Little Leaguer to hit a home run at the lighted field. And his passion and what he gave to his sport and to the community, I think, really gives us the real pleasure to name the field in his honor.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions or comments to Mrs. Bagley? Yes, sir. Councilman Flanagan.
I come with this issue kind of with a unique perspective. I knew Ryan a little bit. Even though we were from the same town, we were always opposite sides. We played against each other in Little League, played against each other in high school, played against each other in travel ball. But I'm going to be supporting this, because while we always think of ourselves as a small town and kind of a neat little community, I think it kind of, it sets the example that you could be from a small town and you could do really incredible things with work ethic and with doing things the right way, and I'm sure anyone on that back wall will tell you that not only was he a tremendous player, but off the field, he was a really good person as well. So, I'll keep it at that since it's 9:05.
It's great to hear. Anybody else with any comments? Okay. Well, I'll just make mention, thank you Kathy for the brief history on lighted field. We always call it, "I'm a proud parent of a 10-year-old Little Leaguer." So we always play on either classic or little, lighted field, and whenever my son gets the opportunity to play lighted, he's always excited. Not so much for parents, because it means we're there until 9, 10 o'clock at night, some nights, under the lights. But that's a great story about Ryan hitting the first homerun out of there. Haven't seen my son hit one out that field yet, he's only 10. But there are great things to come for not only Ryan and his family and his supporters here by seeing his name on that field, but, you know, the generations of Little Leaguers that would be playing on that, that it means so much to the family, so that his legacy does go on to other kids and other families in the future. So, thank you. I really don't see anybody with any questions or comments or concerns. Actually, another parent of a, no, you're the uncle of the Little Leaguer that we played against. So.
That was funny when Cromwell had to play Weathersfield. If you don't mind, Mayor, I knew Ryan briefly when he was actually, before he hit the homerun. Also played hockey with Mark. Costello family in general is a very big sporting family in town as they were growing up, as I think many of us know if we're from Weathersfield, excellent athletes. But even sort of more than that, I'm just sort of happy that we're getting into honoring people and having events that are positive, you know, rather than, I know we're doing this because it's a memorial field, but just, you know, we're naming a baseball field, we're doing, we're improving our town, we're saying there's this group of people that gave a lot to our town, that represent what we think is good in this world, and that's just nice to do every once in a while, in a time where we're about to debate this next thing going on with the airport. It's nice to be able to take a breath and say, "Hey, we've got somebody who's had some good success here, and we're happy to cheer him on." So, thank you for bringing this, thank you for the board, family, Kathy, working together. And I hope we get a nice sign and all the rest of it, that we can really do him justice and our town justice. Thanks.
Thank you. Look forward to that, definitely. Councilman Flanagan, I think you may have a motion for us tonight.
Sure. I'll make a motion to name the Lighted Little League Field in Mill Woods Park in memory of Ryan Costello.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. No abstentions. Ayes have it. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Is it too early or too late for me to say, "Go Red Sox" tonight? Anybody else?
5-1.
5-1 Sox? There we go.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going back to our reds, general comments, we've got public. I believe everybody is finished with the public comments. Council reports, any council reports for tonight?
Let me give a quick update.
Councilman Pentelow.
Yeah, just a quick update from EDIC. I think Bonnie pretty much summarized it perfectly with all the projects that we have going on. I did just want to note that our Salute to Business is taking place this Wednesday, the 20th, at the River Restaurant. So, just wanted to inform the public about that. I think there are still tickets available, but you have to contact Denise Bradley.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Pelletier.
I just have a report from the Shade Tree Commission on October 7th, and I just wanted to highlight some positive news about trees in town, since we've been talking a lot about trees getting cut. There's also been a lot of trees getting planted. We, 10 trees were planted in September, mostly, eight out of the 10 were shade trees, so they'll be pretty large, and a lot of them in Old Weathersfield. There's also three were planted on Beverly. But this is in addition to the 16 trees that were planted in the spring. So, I just wanted to share that we, you know, we are planting trees in town, and you'll see them, I'm sure, I see them in my neighborhood, and it'll, they'll continue to grow, and we can all enjoy them.
Thank you. Councilman Biggs.
Thank you, Mayor. Just giving a report from the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, led by Ms. Catherine Meyer and Mr. Paul Brady. They just wanted to let you all know that they are working, they're working hard. They're working on increasing their presence. They're working on a resource booklet to let everyone aware of what they are doing, and creating a social media platform to hopefully increase fundraising to support those in town that could utilize their assistance. They're volunteering with therapeutic recreation and advocating within the school district and the special education department, and they just really wanted to put that on the platform, so you all know what they're up to. Thank you, Mayor.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Paul, for doing that. Any other council reports? Hearing none. Council comments? Councilman Biggs.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take this opportunity, it is October, and to many of us, we know this month as a very special month, as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We all probably have had interactions with those who may have passed on, who are survivors, myself, my grandmother passed away, my mother fought it, she survived, my mother-in-law, she fought it, she survived. It's just a very close thing to my heart, so I just wanted to bring acknowledgement to it, to support anyone who has gone through it, and bring reference to anyone that's going through it, and just encourage anyone to just support those that may be dealing with it. It's a very hard time. That's all, Mayor.
It is. Thank you. And I believe a lot of our town programs are wearing pink right now in honor. There you go. Thank you very much. And Weathersfield Police Department has decked out one of their cruisers in pink in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So, it is great. Councilman Flanagan.
I just want to thank the interim town manager. I, and Mayor requested two things. I had requested that we circulate the Keisha Farm Survey, and I had requested that we name the Little League Fields in honor of Ryan within 24 hours. Both were none, so I just want to say thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilman Forrest.
Mayor, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. One of our members was recently promoted to Officer II in the United States Navy Reserve.
You took the words out of my mouth.
And, you know, it's not my, he's so humble. It's not really my achievement, but I want to congratulate Mr. Biggs with that recent promotion and his dedication to armed services, and an officer in the United States Navy's a big deal. He's now a lieutenant, junior grade, O2, and I just want to congratulate him.
You and I have talked, we have a fond affinity for the Navy as a son of a naval aviator and an officer, truly an officer and a gentleman. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman O'Connor.
I just want to kind of make a comment in reference to, for all of us, this is our last council meeting together until the election. And I just want to say, you know, some of us may be sitting here again, and some of us may not, some may be sitting over there and some may be sitting over here. But I just want to say is, I'm humbled and thankful that I had the opportunity to be appointed after having served so many years ago to come back up here with some people that were back there even when I was back long ago, Mr. Forrest. But I just wanted to say, thank you. I think we have shown to this town that even though we may differ in our opinions, we can come to a resolution in a bipartisan way. I think we've shown that with our police chief selection, which someday hopefully will be announced. I think we will show that very soon here. And so I'm just happy to be a part of that and I thank all of you because I know you had to, I was appointed and I know you guys had a vote on that, so I thank you for that. And, you know, I hope to see you all here again next time we get together, but if not, I just want to say, I enjoyed serving with everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments? A lot of what I wanted to say had already been said, but there is a, the Chamber of Commerce is having their annual barbecue and beer, which unfortunately was canceled last October because of COVID protocol. But it is Friday, October 29th, at 5:30 at the Webb Barn. Come out and support our local businesses and our Chamber of Commerce that they themselves support our businesses. So that would be a good event for not only us to be at, but obviously the public to be at as well. So that again, October 29th at 5:30, the Keisha Farm Survey, as, I forget who mentioned that earlier, but, oh, Tyler had mentioned it earlier, that is up on our website, so please, if you take the time to go to the website. I know Ms. Greenblatt in the back has been working pretty hard on that, take the survey. Everybody's opinion matters on that. Moving forward, we will go to the town manager's report.
Yes, just a couple of quick things on the Keisha Farm. If you do not have computer access, you can pick up paper copies in the manager's office or the clerk's office, fill it out and bring it back. And all of the results are being tabulated by the University of Hartford. It's not coming with the town, so just so you know that. So, please, again, take advantage of that. You have until the end of the month, then we're shutting that down. I've had a lot of questions about the mask mandate in town and the businesses, and I've basically said, "We are still in the yellow zone, so we're still itty..."
Orange.
Huh?
We're in orange.
Is it, is yellow, I forget my colors. My color, I'm colorblind, no, I'm kidding.
Red, orange, yellow.
Red, orange, yellow.
We're in orange.
Middle, I'm sorry. So, we're still there in that middle area, so hopefully that next week we get better numbers. Once we can, we're going to undo this mask mandate. So, I know a lot of other towns have too, and so I want to make sure that we can do that comfortably. And questions on agenda again, and I don't think I mentioned this before, if you do have any questions before the agenda, even if it's the day of, if you can let me know, we can get you the answers and that way we make the meeting move quicker and faster. So, I'll be glad to do that. And lastly, good luck, ladies and gentlemen, on the election. And we look forward, I look forward to working with all of you again. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sue, finally, the town clerk, communication.
We are very busy in our office issuing absentee ballots.
Yeah, if you want to read that in, we can, we may save that to the end when we do the minutes. And then actually, do we have minutes?
We do not have minutes. We've been inundated and so Lynn has...
Can you bring your microphone down just a little?
We don't have the minutes because we've been just swamped with the ballots and Lynn has had to pitch in, we have, to get the ballots out.
Okay.
She's working on those. They're almost, they're almost done. They should be ready for the next meeting.
Okay. So sure, why don't we, if you have them in front of you then, we can say them now if we don't have minutes later. Some comments from, yeah, right, summary of those that have written in either on the October 4th meeting or for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Okay, so these are the, it's a summary of the emails that we received for the public hearing. Mary Ann Shin, 109 Randy Lane, asks to please decommission the airport. Martha and Michael Caneely, 12 Fairmont Street, were in support of decommissioning Brainerd Airport. It is a financial drain on the state and has never been profitable. The value Riverfront property on which it sits has the potential to be transformed into a vibrant commercial development that will increase property values and create jobs and business opportunities benefiting Weathersfield and Hartford. Kathy Legano, 121 Highland Street, was in favor of decommissioning Brainerd Field. Sharon Truex, 17 Broad Street, was in support of decommissioning the airport. A vote from the town of Weathersfield reinforces the vote from Hartford and could be effective in preventing the planned tapping of trees. Ally Flynn, 1 Megget Park, moved here three years ago and she's severely disappointed in the amount of noise pollution our community is exposed to daily. The pilots that utilize the airport have complete disregard for the residential neighborhoods. She can only imagine the level of exhaust pollution that our community has also been exposed to over the years. If Brainerd is not decommissioned, she will most likely move out of Old Weathersfield, but hopes that the value of her home is not in jeopardy by the airport disruption. Cindy Greenblatt, 35 Broad Street, strongly supports a resolution to decommission Brainerd Airport, and she asks that the council join our neighbors and colleagues in Hartford to speak with one voice in advocating for a better vision for the Brainerd property, for our future and the future of the region. Kristin Lewandowski-Greenblatt wrote that the expansion of the Brainerd Airport and cutting of the 40 acres of trees will negatively affect Weathersfield in so many ways. She was saddened to hear that the plan is moving forward to cut the beautiful trees down this winter. Think of what could be done with that lovely area. Decommissioning is the right thing to do for the community and the planet. Morgan Faisal, 538 Main Street, Brainerd has survived off of state and federal tax dollars for decades. There are over 50 other airports in Connecticut that could do anything Brainerd does for a lower cost. Brainerd draws in all kinds of loud air traffic over Old Weathersfield. Decommission Brainerd now. Use the space for things that will benefit a significant portion of our population while creating jobs and avoiding wasted tax dollars on a grossly losing business. Tim and Ann Scarborough, 2 Kelly Avenue, they are in the direct line on the flight pattern of Brainerd Airport. They strongly support the decommission of Brainerd Airport and are tired of calling with complaints, nothing is resolved. The proposed tree cutting will only make this worse. Susan Grady, 25 Westlick Road, was in favor of decommissioning Brainerd Field. It is a losing proposition all around, it's not bringing in any revenue. She's totally opposed to cutting down 30 acres of trees. According to the great environmentalist David Attenborough, deforestation is a main cause of global warming. Gail and Kevin Stewart, 411 Main Street, wrote that they are in support of decommissioning Brainerd Airport. Howard Greenblatt, 35 Broad Street, enthusiastically supports the resolution to decommission Brainerd Airport for the benefit of Weathersfield and the Hartford region. Adam Ovian, 56 Broad Street, he wrote that while the Hartford-Brainerd Airport may have once contributed much to its surrounding community, for decades now it has been a fiscal strain, drawing public dollars to cover expenses while leaving Hartford with unrealized tax revenue and draining the municipal and state economy. Brainerd Airport is situated on the finest riverside parcel in all of central Connecticut with over 200 acres and more than a mile of riverfront preserves the ecosystems along the water. Weathersfield's future is intertwined with that of Hartford. It would most certainly benefit from the closure and redevelopment of the property into a neighborhood that embraces its role in connecting residents to the river while creating an epicenter for social, economic, and environmental engagement. John Gallivan, 72 Westwood Drive, is in support of the resolution to close Brainerd Airport. This will support the quality of life of residents in town, especially Old Weathersfield. Paula and Tom Izzard, 92 Cedar Brook Drive, strongly urge the council to consider the resolution to decommission Brainerd Airfield, which Hartford has already done. Brainerd is slated to begin cutting 40 acres of trees this winter in order to expand the airfield. This is a heartbreaking scenario which will negatively affect our beautiful town and those around us. Please send a strong message that massacring acres of well-estrabished trees for runways is totally unacceptable. Jean Freeman, 59 Church Street, lives in Old Weathersfield and can attest to the negative impacts experienced on a regular basis by those who live there and the surrounding communities due to the noise. She questions what is essentially a recreational endeavor for a relatively small group of people, taking flying lessons and recreational flying, and why it's located in an area where it adversely impacts the work and life of so many residents who are not able to escape the noise. There are better uses for the land that may offer multiple benefits to the wider community without the adverse effects of the air traffic. She fully supports a resolution in favor of decommissioning the airport. Sandra Stoffer Jisowski wants to please stop this from happening and preserve Old Weathersfield and the land around by keeping the peace and protecting the wildlife. Everything these days is about money, but what about the price of what it is destroying? Gloria McLean, 16 Dogwood Court, has lived in Weathersfield for 50 years and raised her family here, but currently lives in Rocky Hill. She asks to vote to commission Brainerd, decommission Brainerd Airport. It will take us much further towards reuniting Weathersfield with the Connecticut River, giving us more access to the water and open space, so that many residents of Weathersfield and the surrounding communities desire. It will hopefully negate permanently the horrible decision to strip our communities of the trees that bolster our ecosystem. It will certainly put an end to the noise that the citizens of Old Weathersfield have endured for years, deeply interfering with their quality of life. Maria Alfonso, 256 Brimfield Road, is in support of the resolution. The possible expansion of this airport, which has cost taxpayers so much money over the years without producing any significant economic benefit, is not fiscally prudent. Expansion efforts being considered would entail the removal of several trees in Old Weathersfield, which would adversely impact the air quality in town as less oxygen would be produced and threaten the wildlife that depend on these trees for survival. And expansion efforts being considered would entail the removal of several trees in Old Weathersfield, which would adversely impact the air quality in town. Hmm, looks like that's, and the wildlife that depend on these trees for survival, and that would also negatively impact the quality of life and character of Old Weathersfield, which benefits town residents and attracts visitors who gladly spend money in town. Michael Clark, 330 Main Street, is his residence and 271 Main Street is the Main Street Creamery, is in support for decommissioning of Brainerd Airport. The noise from the air traffic is a blight on many Old Weathersfield properties, which would likely be worsened by any expansion. He understands there is a discussion of clearing another 40 acres of land to expand an airport that has not had positive financial impact on the region in many years. Reclaiming the existing land that is already in use by the airport for better purpose makes more sense to this Old Weathersfield resident. Natalie Crawford, currently 10 Brimfield Way, Rocky Hill, formerly of Chauncey Road, is a former Weathersfield resident for 35 years. She agrees the airport should be closed and the property used for something more beneficial. The noise from planes flying over Old Weathersfield is so disruptive, she also would hate to see wildlife disturbed from the clearing of the trees. Holly Maynard and Robert Byron, 73 Clearfield Road, are in support of decommissioning of Brainerd Airport, which this economic drain stands to benefit both the city of Hartford and its sister communities. With decommissioning of this noisy airport, Hartford would be availed of perhaps a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to greatly enhance the quality of life of the region's residents as well as its wild inhabitants. The airport will never be a money-making machine that benefits the residents of the Hartford region, even if proposed enhancements are realized. The adaptive reuse of prime riverscape and arable land could be the game changer for Hartford that all of us lifelong residents have been waiting decades to see come to fruition. We could lead the nation in revitalizing an urban area with a measurable positive impact on the climate. Dana Spicer, 31 Church Street Residence, 169 Main Street, Heart of the Country, is in support for this resolution from both a business and personal standpoint, as both are currently in the flight path to the airport. The increased noise that will be created by additional air traffic and larger aircraft is unacceptable and unnecessary, as there is an ample number of airports able to handle this traffic easily accessible to these aircraft. In addition, the deforestation of 40 acres of land near the Connecticut River is unnecessary and a poor decision from environmental and aesthetic perspectives. There must be better and more attractive ways to use this land that will be of benefit to a much larger segment of our population. And I think it was one more, and that's from Mary and Frank Senna of 103 Eastern Drive. The reasons that they support the closing of Brainerd Airport are that closing the airport would benefit Hartford and all the surrounding communities in different ways. Closing Brainerd would spare 27 acres of trees in four communities slated for destruction. It would, closing Brainerd would preserve the Connecticut River ecosystem in both Hartford and Weathersfield Cove area. Closing Brainerd could save the cost of deforestation and expansion, which was estimated to be $33 million in 2017. No figures have been given for the 2021 costs. Closing Brainerd would give Hartford access to 201 acres of Riverfront property. Closing Brainerd in no way affects the CT Arrow School, and closing Brainerd would benefit Weathersfield by ending noisy overflights and considerable air pollution. And Brainerd is a financial drain on the state and city of Hartford, requiring state subsidies from the General Fund and not paying its fair share of taxes. It has never been profitable.
Thank you, Sue. And then for the letters that were written in for today's meeting, we can either read those at the end or they would be included in the minutes for next meeting, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. We'll do those for the minutes of the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item B, council action. I believe we have a couple resignations. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the following resignations. We've got a fog problem here. Julia Zach, 29 Jacobs Drive, from the Economic Development and Improvements Commission and Redevelopment Agency, for a term of 2/18/19 to 6/30/23. From Planning and Zoning Commission, Azim Korkatovic, 86 Saxon Road, term 2/1/21 to 6/30/23. And from the Veterans Commission, Helen Nye, 48 Old Post Road, term of 7/1/20 to 6/30/22.
Motion has been made on these resignations. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. And now on to B1B, appointments to boards and commissions.
Make a motion to appoint the following. To the Veterans Commission, Sandra Rhodes, 36 Golf Road, term of 10/18/21 to 6/30/22. And to Planning and Zoning Commission, Paul Thompson, 148 Clearfield, term of 10/18/21 to 6/30/23.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, moving on to resolutions portion, Item B1C. I'd like to make a motion to remove from the table the resolution that was brought up at the October 4th meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Eyes have it. Okay, before us is the resolution, and this is where I believe we have in our packet the amended resolution, but I don't believe we voted to amend it. These are just notes from the town manager to kind of get us to where we had left off. I guess we can either go with what is in our packet or go off of the original resolution. I suspect with some input from us, we would go off of what is in our packet for any discussion. And I'll open it up for discussion. Hearing none. I would like to make a motion to amend our resolution that is before actually the original resolution. I know, I think I shared this with Councilman Hill. Discuss it, but I would like to make a motion to amend, as I said, the resolution that was before us, or that is before us in our packet. Hearing the concerns from residents at the October 4th meeting, listening to some of the comments that Chairman Dillon had mentioned to us over the phone last week, and then discussing with some of the colleagues, I thought this was a way to get to really the crux of the concerns that the residents had brought forward with regard to noise. Sorry, Mr. O'Connor, it's, it is, listening to those that had written in and the comments up here, it really is a noise, but the noise comes with close proximity planes, and, you know, they are a safety concern, not only for, you know, Old Weathersfield, but as we heard, East Hartford and our surrounding communities as well. So I'd like to put this amendment before you. We can discuss it, or without any discussion, hopefully vote in support of it.
Mayor, I think there's a point of order here. I don't, we have an amendment on the table right now. So, I don't know what you want to...
Is, is the other ones?
We have a, there's a, there's a base one, and then there's B1, current, B1C is a motion to amend to that.
Let me take a look. I think there's, are there minutes?
You'd have to see who made the motion and the second and have them withdrawn.
Okay, let me just take a look. Yeah, there weren't any, there were, there are no minutes. I thought I saw...
So many that I put...
There are unapproved minutes.
Who made the motion to move forward and second?
Councilman Forrest motioned to change the wording, and it was seconded by Counselor Hill, and then we went to table. So, there is a amended version on the floor prior to tabling it?
Yep.
But it was never voted on, the whole amendment. I think they just put it forward.
Okay.
I guess as long as we remove our first and second word.
Right.
So with this amendment still being on the floor, which we see, I guess drafted by you in our packet.
Well, Counselor Forrest also, he's the one who put that through as the amendment he was talking about.
Okay.
So, but, you know, you guys, you never voted on it because he was going to refine it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, and that's what's here.
Well, it, I mean, it lays out the support for the decommissioning and allocates some of the, we had members of the dais that had some concerns, and we made those amendments here, and that's what the amendment reflects. Those concerns, I thought they were from Counselor Pentel, maybe O'Connor, and I think Counselor Pelletier as well.
Okay, so would we need to then, as I made motion to amend, we would need to then go back to the amended amendment?
Unless those who made the first and second on that agree to withdraw and put yours.
Okay.
Actually, you can't do that after it's seconded. Once it's seconded, it's on the floor, and it's actually considered council property. And only the council at that point, it's been released, can act and do what it wants with it.
Just do a formal vote. I don't know, I don't have my Roberts book here.
Or could we, like, table this amendment and propose the new amendment?
I think you could just...
You just vote on it, guys. You guys have the majority, like, if you want to vote it down, you vote it down. If you think it's a good idea because of everything we've heard, hopefully you think it's a good idea. It takes into consideration a lot of the stuff that you guys talked about, and it supports the decommissioning.
I have a question. When the original motion was made and seconded, and then we, and then the amendment was made and seconded, so now we can't amend it further? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. There's no such thing as an amendment of an amendment. You'd have to get back to the main motion and then reamend.
Oh, okay, I see. Okay, so are, is it correct that our options under Roberts' rules would be, so if the motion won't be withdrawn, we either vote on the motion, or we can table this one and just propose a new one?
I think to make it cleaner, I would tell you to vote on the amendment that's there now, and then replace with that. I think it's going to be a lot cleaner.
Or Counselor Forrest...
Because if you table it, then it's out there forever.
But could Counselor Forrest just withdraw that motion?
No, because there's already been a second on it. So we have to vote on it.
Property of the council, so to speak. No control. It's not just down there.
So, are we voting on the resolution as a whole, or the amendment to the resolution?
You have to handle amendments as a secondary motion first before you can get to the main motion.
Yep.
Okay.
Technically.
Well...
Or we, even if it's messy, we could still table it, even though it's just kind of an odd procedural.
And it would sit there in perpetuity?
Yes, that's the thing.
Well, it's all right.
If your intent is to never take it off, you know what I'm saying? Then it will always sit there, unless it's taken off.
Somebody takes it off in the future.
And votes up or down, it'll always sit there.
How do we get this one out? That's the question. Like, let's just, like, let's call it what it is, guys. So do we have, do we have to vote, do we have to vote the original amendment, then introduce this one?
No, we could table this, what is in our packet, and some future council either votes to take it off, table, and address it at that point, yea or nay, or we can, and then we can take up this amendment.
Or it can be withdrawn?
No, it can't be withdrawn.
It cannot be withdrawn, yeah, okay, just...
Just got to vote, guys.
So I would make a...
It's really easy.
Well, or we could vote to table the amendment.
I move we table the amendment from the last council meeting.
Motion to table has been made.
You're tabling the whole thing. No such thing as tabling, you're tabling the motion. Consideration of the issue, we're tabling.
Because we have a new one, that we did in a bipartisan fashion.
That's, I mean, but that's the issue, that, that's the issue. So if you're tabling the issue, the thing that you brought up is the issue, so now you're bringing it back.
He's not tabling the issue, he's tabling the...
Previous motion.
...motion, or, you know, this...
The amendment.
The amendment, that's...
You table, you can't table an amendment. That's, that's voting it down.
We did last week, though. We did that last, our last meeting.
You tabled the mo, the whole, the main motion is tabled. Consideration of the issue is tabled. If you guys want to do your thing, I'm telling you how to do it. You just vote this down, and that's it. You vote down the amendment, then you can introduce your own amendment. I'll tell you guys how to run a meeting here. Then you introduce your own amendment, and this amendment would supplant the main motion, and then you get where you got to be. If that's what you want to do. I think the main thing is good, but, you know, that's a, that's a discussion point, rather than a procedural point.
Yeah, if the intent is to vote the amendment down because you want to put another amendment in, then that's your rationale for voting it down, is you have a replacement wording that you would like to have voted on instead, but I think it's just clear.
Then, then I would make a recommendation, we vote down the existing motion, because as I had asked for from day one, is we wanted a motion and a resolution that had more teeth in it than what was initially introduced, and the resolution that we put together in a bipartisan way has more teeth, so we'll vote down the last one and we'll introduce this one. So that's a long motion.
You can do better. It hasn't been seconded, so you still own it.
So, motion on the amended resolution, which has been made by Councilman Forrest and seconded by Councilman Hill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Nay.
Okay, that amendment has failed, I believe, Sue, six, three, six to, no, I guess it would be three to six. And now I'll make the motion to amend the underlying resolution with what has been handed out to council tonight. Motion's been made and seconded.
Can we read that into the record?
Yeah, we can either read it into the record, or...
We could say as, as presented to the council.
As presented to the council, right.
It's a choice.
I don't believe the, the public has had...
Read it into the record.
Right, and for discussion. Can I take my mask off when I do this?
Sure, of course, I'll let you.
As I don't want to get the fogged-up version, and I have read resolutions in the past. This is a resolution requesting Brainerd Airport and the Connecticut Airport Authority respect the airspace directly over the town of Weathersfield. Whereas Brainerd Airport is a publicly-owned airport situated on two-hundred-and-one acres of land in Hartford, and whereas the town of Weathersfield abutting Brainerd Airport to the south is in the flight path of aircraft arriving, departing, arriving and departing from the airport, and whereas this is a Hartford-Brainerd, there is a Hartford-Brainerd Airport Committee made up of Weathersfield residents, Connecticut Airport Authority representatives, and the Weathersfield Town Manager. And whereas this committee reports on the volume of flights landing and departing in Brainerd, excuse me, we might have to amend to put in Brainerd or at Brainerd. And whereas Brainerd Airport operates a call-in telephone number to report low-flying, loud, and generally vexing flights that utilize Brainerd Airport. And whereas there is a recommended takeoff and approach criteria that pilots are asked to avoid flying over the town of Weathersfield. And whereas there are parcels of Weathersfield land directly under the takeoff and approach of runway 220. Now therefore, be it resolved, the town of Weathersfield stands in support of our residents who have sustained for too long the neglect of airport personnel and pilots to maintain an approach and takeoff from Brainerd Airport in such a way as to avoid flying over the town of Weathersfield. And be it further resolved, the town of Weathersfield opposes any expansion of the runways at Brainerd Airport in such a way as to allow Brainerd Airport to accommodate larger aircraft than currently utilizing the airport. Be it further resolved, the town of Weathersfield opposes any efforts to increase flight volume. And be it further resolved, the town of Weathersfield opposes any mass clearcutting of trees in or on Weathersfield property. And be it further resolved, the town of Weathersfield supports these efforts and will bring them to the attention of the South Meadows Area Development Task Force when developing a plan for Brainerd Airport property. That's a capital D in development. Councilman Forrest.
Thanks. A lot of good stuff here, a lot of good stuff there. But it seems like, and I'm going to go to what Counselor O'Connor talked about, because I think he's right, he's right. Where's the teeth in this? This is saying, we don't like what's going on, but the only way to stop these items is the decommissioning of the airport. So we have to get there. It's okay if you want to take out the parts of the Hartford thing and the rest of it, right? But this, this group was very honest, and I respect all of their, it's not really testimony, I guess it could be, but like, they were straight with us. We're going to make it bigger. We're going to make the whole airport and the road a little, the runway a little bit longer. We're looking for economic vitality, right? How do you get economic vitality with economic action? Which means we're going to get more planes. It goes against all that, what we've heard here. The interest of our town is to not have that, it's clear. And we can get into the whole cost thing, but they're losing money. And it's not like this is a new venture, right? This thing, this airport has been here since Lindbergh. It's been here for a long time. They're losing money. We're sucking wind. We're taking the money out of Bradley. And all of that deficit money could go to pay for this easily, not including the actual value of the land. So the decommissioning of the airport cost of it is a nonstarter. Tom, you run a business, you know that, you're missing half a million dollars a year, we could bond that over five years and pay for all this, plus make money after that. So, I totally am on board with this, if we add one thing. Be it further resolved, the town of Weathersfield supports the decommissioning of Brainerd Airport. It's that simple. All this stuff is good, but it doesn't mean anything unless we actually say, how are we going to stop it? What's the solution here? The solution is not, we don't like it. The solution is, don't do it. And the only way to not do it is the decommissioning. I'm not like thrilled about a decommissioning of an airport, this doesn't like make me extremely happy, but it's clearly in the best interest of our town. And Hartford's going to have to deal with this. No one's sitting up putting a bond referendum for the town of Weathersfield to go foot this bill. Town of Weathersfield has the land, it's a hundred and whatever acre it is of property that's on the front, the state of Connecticut will make a deal with the city of Hartford, and all of that land is worth millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars. Millions of dollars. It'll pay for it. The people will get paid off that are there, that have long-term contracts, but that's not for us to worry about. What are the interests of Weathersfield? We want to start slowing down the, we want to stop the amount of air traffic over Old Weathersfield, and the rest of the stuff that goes with it. So, I'm going to make a motion to amend this, completely support everything on it. That the town of, that we add on the bottom, be it further resolved, that the town of Weathersfield supports the decommissioning of Brainerd Airport. And I'm looking for a second.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did, was, I thought there was a motion that was already made and seconded. Did I miss that?
Did we just do this?
There was a motion.
Discussing it. If, if there's a second, does that mean we can't discuss, because there's some weird, since you're like the rules guy? Is there like some rule about cutting off discussion after?
I apologize if I'm out of order, because I very well may be. Was there a motion and a second to this?
Yeah, there was a motion and a second, and then it was open to comments, but you can't add an amendment to that.
Sure you can. What are you talking about? It's the main motion. So I did make, I made the amendment, and I'm looking for a second.
The mayor's amendment is on the table.
Yeah, so again, similar to what had occurred with yours.
Understood. Absolutely correct. I'm sorry, I was, I was out of order, and I'll reserve that so now I don't have to go through the whole spiel again.
Any other discussion? Okay, this motion to amend the underlying resolution, oop, sorry, Kevin.
I appreciate it. First of all, thank you. I do support this amendment, underlying resolution. You know, we've, we have heard...
You know, we've, we have heard tremendous amount of testimony from the town clerk regarding the decommissioning, and though, as Counselor Forrest just said, this does not have the word decommissioning in it. It's not the language I was hoping for, but it certainly moves the ball forward. But this does acknowledge the development of the property, and that certainly is a step in the right direction. So I encourage all of us to support this. So, thank you.
And I also support it as well.
And also, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to thank you and Counselors O'Connor and Pendlo for, for working on this. So, thank you again.
Again, that resolution of bipartisanship worked well, and we did hear from the Airport Authority, I believe in that call that we had, that they have told their pilots, you know, the, the clouds are coming, the dark clouds are coming. If towns like Weathersfield and Hartford are having these, maybe the pilots will change their attitude on how they fly over Weathersfield. So hopefully this will be, you know, a deterrent, or maybe a, a, a step for them to follow the noise abatement signs that are posted throughout. And again, I thank you for your support on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Kevin, Barry.
I'm sorry, but now we have the main motion on the table. That was the amendment.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, that is, you're correct. That was the amended, we had amended language. Now, motion support the, can't say the decommissioning, but resolution of support for the resolution for the Brainerd Airport and Connecticut Airport Authority to respectfully respect the airspace over Weathersfield.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by
Mayor?
Excuse me.
Actually, it was already on the table, so you didn't need a second, because it just passed. But now I'm gonna move to amend and add the language we just talked about before. Be it further, at the end, be it further resolved, that the town of Weathersfield supports the decommissioning of Brainerd Airport.
Not hearing? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nays have it, three to six. Now, before us, we have the resolution that I just read into the record. Did you just second?
It's on the table.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on to three, other business, A. This is the appointment of a search consultant for town manager. And
Can we do a quick get through, or?
Yeah, are you doing it, or is Lori doing it, or are you doing it? Okay, thank you.
Yes, the town manager search, I mean, right now there's a lot of advertisement out there on a nationwide business basis to appoint managers all over the country. Council, you need to really start moving ahead with what you want to do here, plus you got the holidays. So I did contact SGR. They came back with a proposal and went back again. They've reduced it another thousand. So your options here is go with SGR, who you've used before, or do a request for proposal and start all over and decide on a new firm. But either way, with the time schedule, you really should do one or the other. And there is no money budgeted for this, so it will have to come out of reserves at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions for Bonnie? Councilman Diggs?
Thank you, Mayor. Bonnie, I just have a question. I just want to make sure that the numbers are correct. I did read that they said they'd give us a $2,000 discount, but only a $1,000 difference. Is that just something that needs to be updated for literature purposes?
If I could update what?
The, in the agenda, it says there's, it shows only $1,000 difference, but it says that they approved to do a $2,000 difference?
Off of the standard. Yeah.
Yeah. The first reduction was in this number.
Yeah.
Right, so I just want to make sure that
We went
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. We went to Doug Thomas
Okay, so that was after
After the letter.
I'm sorry.
Can't come out, so he reduced it by an additional $1,000.
I just want to make sure we didn't make a mistake on the number part.
Nope.
Thank you very much.
You are, I was gonna actually mention that, because if you do go into the letter, the, the numbers are off. But he did send the original proposal on October 7th, but we asked for a better deal.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions on this? It is pretty imperative that we get going soon, rather, sooner rather than later on this. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't have any, I couldn't find the wording for it. What was I gonna say? So moved. Motion to appoint SGR for the search for a new town manager and request to start the search as soon as possible, or motion to issue a request for proposal for a search firm for the position of town manager.
We do not need the or, so
Which one is it?
Just read it.
It's late, it's late.
Yep. I would
Start over again. Start over. I would like to make a motion to appoint SGR for the search for a new town manager and request to start the search as soon as possible. Period.
Second. Give that to Tom. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Going back to the agenda, this is where we get a lot of papers in front of us.
Meeting dates.
Yep. Town council's schedule of meetings, 2022. The council votes on this about this time every year. Thank you, Bonnie, for coming in. There were a couple of questions on holidays and days, I believe we have them in here as, as submitted. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the meeting dates of the Weathersfield Town Council for the year of 2022, per the attached
Second. Any discussion on the meeting dates? Councilman Forrest?
Mayor, have we just checked to see if there's any conflicts, especially like Jewish holidays in the fall and stuff like that?
Yes, we have.
Yep, we went through everything.
Yep, same, good.
Yes, it wa, it's not like this past September with Labor Day and High Holy Days. We did do that. We also checked to make sure that July 1, a Friday, isn't the holiday, but July 4th, the Monday, is the holiday. New Year's, I believe, is a Friday, the 31st, but would the holiday fall on the 3rd? So, yep, we reached out to the bargaining units on those, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Ayes have it, motion carries. And then, and I see Mike Zaleski here. This is the D, uh, 3D, DEEP Trails Grant. I don't know if you wanted to mention anything about this. This is the $5,000 grant for expanding the trails from Rocky Hill through Weathersfield to South Meadows of Hartford.
Right, from Hartford going south. And this will be a planning document, as Mr. Zaleski mentioned, to try to put together a plan. We did some proposals. We've got a map. I gave each of you some possibilities of where that might go. But at this point, we really need to do the planning grant first to come up with what's the most viable option. So that either Mr. Zaleski or myself should be able to help with questions.
I just want to correct, that's $500,000, not 5,000.
Is it the, is this just the study, or is this the full?
I think Michael's gonna address the funding.
Hello again. So the grant that would be requested from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection would be roughly $128,000 to $185,000. If the town of Rocky Hill, Rocky Hill was included, it would potentially expand to about $230,000. The Connecticut DEP has about $3 million to give out for recreational trail grants, and feasibility studies are inclu, are allowed, applications. We, there's a 20% match, so the, the 128, there would be a $25,000 match that would be required from the participating entities. We have a commitment from the city of Hartford for a $15,000 contribution. And we would be seeking some amount from the town of Weathersfield. It's my understanding from Peter Gillespie, the town planner, that he has some local CIP dollars that are in flux or are
Uncommitted.
Uncommitted. So we'd be, we'd be looking at submitting an application in November for, I say we, the partnership with the town of Weathersfield as the lead, of course, for roughly 120, $128,000 to potentially $185,000 if, if it was just Hartford and the town of Weathersfield. That would increase if the town of Rocky Hill was, and it was included. How, they've been approached, but we haven't heard a formal answer.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
The, the grant itself says here it's up to $500,000. Does this grant allow for any construction costs, or it's just a planning grant?
It, it would if we were to the point where we had an actual project, but this feasibility study is the first step in a longer process. So we wouldn't necessarily be applying for construction dollars at this point.
Do we have any ballpark, rough estimate of what something like this would cost to construct?
That would depend, well, and, no, because the, we, the feasibility study would determine where this trail might go, frankly, if it was feasible. I mean, we reserve the right to say, well, this isn't necessarily feasible. But as you can see from the map, there's a couple of different scenarios to get from point A to point B and ultimately C. But this study is, this study looks at, at everything. It looks at at the viability of different avenues. It looks at property owners. It looks at rights of way. It looks at a variety of different aspects. Why it's so expensive is because it goes into significant detail, so the, the study that we ultimately end up recommends the most appropriate way, and then puts a dollar amount on it.
By accepting grant money for the study, are we committing ourselves to the construction of this project?
No.
I have, I have a problem with the 20% matching, where our CIP funds are so stretched every year. You know, there's three and a half to five and a half million dollars of projects on the list right now. I'm on the Committee for Capital Improvements, and every year we're tasked with eliminating all kinds of important things, fixing roofs and roads that are flooding and all kinds of things. So while I appreciate what this could do as far as, you know, recreation and connecting spaces, connecting towns, I'm very leery of, of spending the 20%. With some of the studies we've done in the past, they, you know, we spend a lot of money on the studies and we, quite frankly, we never had the money to do the project. We have a Millwoods Master Plan that's, it was a $12 million project. Matt, you might know what year that was done. It was done many years ago. You know, we chipped away at it. I think we've done maybe a million dollars' worth of the total project, so I, I have a little heartburn trying to rationalize spending that kind of money for the study. I, I understand there's environmental issues, landowner issues, and all kinds of things, but
And I, I guess I would suggest that the actual construction, there's a variety of different ways to pay for the actual construction. Obviously, state and federal dollars are going to come with some match, so you're correct, there's going, at some point, there's going to be some match. There's been some grants over the last couple of years that have had have had lesser percentages, but ultimately, if you're going the route of public dollars, there's probably going to be some match. It's rare when there's no, a zero match. There, there, it's possible. But there are other areas where funding other project with private foundation dollars.
One other question I have is, if, if we don't get buy-in from Hartford and, and Rocky Hill, or who else was on the list? Was it just Hartford and Rocky Hill? Does the project make sense to just do the Weathersfield portion, or are we gonna basically end up going nowheres?
I'd
Much the same as
Sure.
Much the same as the bridge project, where there's no way to get to the bridge or the
And, and I would suggest that this is a great way to help take the next step towards getting to that bridge. This is a top priority for the city of Hartford. It's one of their top priorities in their, in their bike plan. So this, the, and, and the early commitment of dollars for this, this feasibility study, I think shows that this is something that they're interested in moving forward with.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Palatier?
Thank you. So I think this is, you know, a great idea. I, I think it would be really beneficial, and it's exciting as someone who, you know, bikes with my kids. But I have a question about like the map I'm looking at. So it's the Weathersfield to Rocky Hill, that looks like there is an existing, the existing path, you know, through the meadows, that rock path. Is this, I mean, how would that differ? Like, we already have sort of a route to Rocky Hill that way. I mean, I'm, so I was just a little confused as to, is this gonna be paved, or is it just, or is this just the study to see what can be done?
I guess I would caution putting too much, visuals are great, right? Everybody wants to sort of see what this might look like. This is something that, I'm gonna trust the planning consultant to look at these options and provide a three or four different options to get to from point A to point B. This is fairly rudimentary, but put in place at the request of the town so that you all could get a visual about what we're thinking about. It's, it, I wouldn't put too much, those blue and orange and red lines, there's lots of different options, and, and and some of them are maybe viable and some may not. That's the whole point of the feasibility study. So I, I, I'm cautious about saying that, that particular route might be the way, the preferred way. It's just, there's, there's too many, there's too much research that needs to be done prior to making a determination like that.
Okay.
But ultimately, the goal of these types of riverwalk projects and these types of multimodal trails is to get off of a public road to provide cyclists, joggers, walkers, the opportunity to be in a space that isn't necessarily impacted by a motor vehicle. That's ideal.
Right. Okay, so, so it's still too early to like, to say, is this paved, or it could be paved, it could be gravel, what, is it just
It, it could be typically, an accessible trail is paved with asphalt and typically has three to six-foot grass shoulders, so that if somebody who wants to jog, not necessarily on asphalt, could actually use a different surface. That's similar to what we're doing in our riverwalk from the, from the north meadows of Hartford to the town of Windsor. It's going to be 12-foot wide asphalt with five, I believe, five-foot wide shoulders that are grass.
Thank you.
Councilman Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. Is there a way to, can we pay for our 20% portion in in-kind donation, rather than a cash donation? Sometimes I see grants like that.
I don't believe so.
And red onions?
Sometimes there's like work that we can do and be up, you know, dig in.
For a feasibility study, it's typically monetary contribution.
Fair enough, thanks.
Councilman Hill?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I do agree, kind of some, some of the concerns regarding, you know, cost, these, these these plants are expensive. However, the vision is also quite grand. As someone who walks their dog through the meadows pretty much every morning, it's, it probably has the most untapped potential in all of town, that area. has the most untapped potential in all of town, that area. And I do daydream often, envisioning what the town can do with that property. And right now, I mean, it's absolutely gorgeous down there with the leaves changing, and to Deputy Mayor's point, I do walk by the Putnam Bridge every day, and I see the lock on the, but I know Mr. Gregor's been working on some grants to connect Old Weathersfield down to that, to that bridge. So, that, again, this is another opportunity for us to kind of see what we can do with this. I mean, the opportunity here for, is really endless, and I support this. Thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Kevin, if I could ask you a question. The route on the left-hand side, it's Weathersfield to Rocky Hill, option one. Essentially, that's Great Meadows Road, correct?
Well, yeah.
The last time I, I haven't been to the meadows on that road for 40-something years. But, yeah, at one point you were able to...
Everywhere else.
At one point, you were able to drive Great Meadows Road all the way to the Rocky Hill ferry. It was a dirt road, it was in pretty rough shape. Does that still exist? Can you take your dog for a walk there?
You can if it's not flooded.
If it's not flooded, but...
Yeah, and it, with the rains we've been having, it's flooded quite a bit.
Even if we put a pathway in, that area's going to...
You can, because with the turf farms there, I mean, the tractors go up and down those streets every day.
Right. Okay. So, it's not conducive to recreation? Is that what you're saying?
For recreation, sure, yeah. I mean, it's not busy traffic or anything, I wouldn't, I mean, if you see one car, you've seen a lot.
And I would suggest about 30% of our existing riverwalk system goes underwater at least once or twice a year, as well.
That's going to happen whether we pave it or not.
It's the Connecticut River, it's going to, it's not going to ask permission.
So, I'm just trying to justify why we need to improve that stretch, Weathersfield to Rocky Hill. It exists.
So, what we typically do is a fully accessible riverwalk that is able to be enjoyed by people who may not necessarily be as capable or as mobile. So, a gravel or a stone dust trail may, is not necessarily considered accessible by standard.
Okay. I think, just from what I remember of it, you're going to have a hard time, that town property pretty much is the riverbank. So, you have the road, and then it just drops off into the river.
Which is the great thing about a feasibility study, is it points out things like that. It talks about the positives, and it also talks about the challenges of doing something like this, and they factor that into the whole study, so that ultimately, they say, yes, this is something that is common or standard, or this is, this would be an unusual occurrence.
Councilman O'Connor?
I'm just going to add, so Tom, I ride my bike usually once a week, that entire route. And I go all the way to the Rocky Hill ferry from my house, and I circle the ferry, and I ride it all the way back, and it comes out to about 10 miles.
How many days does that take you?
Actually, do it by an hour. And so, but I would just say, I absolutely love it. The road is very passable. I wouldn't think it's going to cost us much to do anything with that. I've even gone after massive rainstorms. The road may get flooded on occasion, it's usually not as bad as you'd think. I like to ride my bike through it to see what happens, which is probably a smart idea, but, but it is, it's a great trail. And I'll tell you, I was on the council 20 years ago when they were talking about the rails to trails, and a lot of people came up here and voted that down and said they didn't want it, they didn't want to be connected to Hartford. And I have to tell you, when the state then went and spent $10 million renovating a train track that may get used once every two weeks, I think it would have been a heck of an idea to have a rails to trails there. Alls you got to do is go to Avon and see what they did. It is an absolute beautiful walk, and, you know, look at Manchester, I was in Valley Falls on Sunday hiking, and they have this beautiful trail up there that connects into the Manchester all the way down. So, I think, you know, putting something like this in and connecting us that way is something that would be greatly used. And so, like Counselor Hill said, I love the idea, and I think, you know, pennies on the dollar to research that and find out, is it even feasible, is probably good money spent, because I can tell you is, I think we've missed the boat on the rails to trails with the railroad going through Old Weathersfield. And think about, you know, how Old Weathersfield's booming right now, boy, we'd get people walking in here all the time, would have been a benefit for us, so.
Thanks, Mike, for coming. I guess I had a couple of questions. Being a member of a club for down in that area, is there parking that is planned? I mean, I guess the feasibility study would be to look into parking.
Sure. There would have to be access points that would be, that where you would, you could get onto this trail and obviously park a vehicle, park a vehicle where, you know, you're bringing bikes to this trail, or you're parking your car so you go jogging along the river. There are, in our existing riverwalk, there are fairly large parks with significant amount of parking, so that makes it a little bit easier. When you get into smaller, more dense areas, there's going to have to be areas for parking, similar, a lot like the, some of the, I've seen the DOT plans for the connection to the Putnam Bridge, and there's a small parking lot of, what, 12 car spaces? There's, at some point, you have to accommodate the users, or not a car-free society just yet.
So, I mean, I've got a couple of questions on this area. With parking and maintenance, who would do the maintenance? Riverfront recapture would be in charge of?
Well, we're certainly really good at it, but we, that would be on a case-by-case basis. Our mission is to connect people to the Connecticut River. So, we are focused on moving forward projects like this that are going to continue to provide access for people to the river, safe access. There's lots of different ways to access the river, but to access the river in a safe way, to use the trails along the river and make these inter-town connections, the feasibility study will address all of that. It'll look at potential locations for parking lots, it'll look at potential locations for the ability to make connections to existing businesses and to potentially to Old Weathersfield. I mean, it'll focus on those types of things that, that one would think you would be interested in hearing. What are the benefits? Well, one of the benefits would be a direct connection to Old Weathersfield and the Main Street area.
Okay. I do know that some of the properties in Rocky Hill have been closed off by gates permanently. I mean, not permanently in the sense that nobody can open them. I mean, the landowners have installed and maintained a locked gate for their properties in the Rocky Hill. I know it's an issue here in Weathersfield with the gates on Elm Street and by Putnam Park, where the bridge is. This, I guess what is Weathersfield to Rocky Hill, option one, as it is on a town road, there are ordinances on locking that gate, keeping it closed at certain times. Also, as I mentioned, the maintenance of that town road on it, so, I mean, obviously, it may not even be, the trail may not even be on that road, it may be something else. But, something to consider when the feasibility study is out there, and I'm sure Derek will be working with the engineers that would be looking into it, and our, you know, planning department. You know, it is a town road, so it's something that we would have to consider, as would be, you know, I think, option two, going underneath 91, that is a town road as well.
Yes.
That leads there, so.
Mr. Deputy Mayor?
On this, rough draft we'll call it, there's a option one in black. I was curious, what are the thoughts about trying to cross the inlet to the Weathersfield Cove, show it going right across the water?
That would be expensive. And, and we try to, we try to keep these riverwalks as close to the river as possible, because we believe the natural asset, the selling point, is the Connecticut River. To do something like that would be a significant engineering...
Marvel.
Well, I don't know about Marvel, but it, as the Director of Park Development...
They can make a bridge over an inlet.
As the engineer in my office says, anything is possible. However, there would be significant expense to that, and it might, you know, it might dwarf the rest of the project. We're ultimately, personally, I'm looking for the most efficient way to accomplish these connections, and the safest ultimately, getting, my priority is getting people as, when, ever possible, off of public roads and onto safe, protected areas like parks and other trails.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just, I have one. I'm going to, I'm going to support this project, and I hope everyone that's sitting up here is sitting up here next year, and when I'm looking for $25,000 to fix a roof, someone's going to come up with the magic answer.
Got it.
Here it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a motion for this one?
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to submit an application to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Trails Grant Program for the purpose of securing grant funds to conduct a trail routing study that would provide a preferred route and associated costs for a trail system connecting the southern terminus of the Riverfront Recapture Trail System in Hartford with Weathersfield and possibly Rocky Hill. The town manager would also be authorized to work with partnering organizations, including Riverfront Recapture, the City of Hartford, the town of Weathersfield, and of Practical, the town of Rocky Hill, to establish the 20% matching funds.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Ayes haven't, motion carries. If you will, let me do the liberty of just following up on what Deputy Mayor said, I really do hope to see all of us back on the council after the election. Moving on to item B3E, Derek Gregor is here. This is the, I will just call it the VHB, On-Call Engineering Services. We had discussed this, I believe, in our, I don't know if we discussed it in the budget, but this was brought up in the August meeting for a transfer for some help in Derek's office to clear some of the projects on your docket, and this would help do that. So, with that, I'll turn the floor over to you, Mr. Gregor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You, Mayor, may not know, we had a number of retirements from our department last year. We ended up at the end of the year with three full-time vacancies in a fairly small department. So, between the vacancies and, you know, obviously, we've had a lot of recent flooding, drainage concerns with the weather that we've been having, as well as we've been very successful, fortunately, with our grant applications for getting funding, so we have a lot of projects to work on, it's just significantly increased the backlog of work. We've had a hard time keeping up, you know, beyond our routine tasks. So, particularly for some of the flooding projects that came up recently, some of them had affected residential structures, people have water in their basements. We got, we're trying to respond as quickly as we can to get some evaluations done, and having a consultant onboard that has that type of experience and availability will be very helpful for our staff. They have the right software, they know the type of work we need done. So, VHB is a pre-qualified consultant with CROG already. They're qualified to do this type of work, they're located with an office here in town. We're currently working with them on our Walker Hill Road reconstruction project that they're designing. So, we're requesting a word of an on-call contract to them, utilizing some of the unspent salary funds from last fiscal year, as a way of kind of supplementing and trying to get some work through some of this backlog that is either too complex for some of our staff to do, or we just haven't had time really to get to it, and some of it has kind of an urgent nature to it. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions for Derek on this? Councilman Forrest?
Derek, how deep's the backlog?
Well, we have a number of drainage systems that even prior to all the heavy rain we had, have been problematic for neighbors that we need to investigate, that have been, we haven't been able to get to in recent months. With regard to some of our state-funded projects, between projects that are currently under design and those that still need to be started, I've got about $9 million worth of work.
How much?
Nine million. And that's probably comprises seven or eight different projects, so there's quite a bit to do. Some of that will be designed in-house, some of that will be a consultant, but we still need to get that, we need to manage that work and get an RFP out and start the process. So, you know, I don't want to lose out on the ability to obtain funds in the future if we haven't been able to spend down what we've been given already.
Do we currently have $9 million that we have not putting into use because of the lack of an ability to get our engineering done?
Well, I mean, some of that is recent funding allocations, and I'd say about $4 million of that is the Walker Hill Road project that we're almost at final design, so that's probably half of it. But, we do have, you know, lots of funds that are available for, we talk, you know, trail connections, sidewalk connections down on Great Meadow Road. We have community connectivity grant funds that were down in Old Weathersfield that we had done preliminary design last year, we just were not able to do final design, and that's something our staff will be working on this winter. So, taking some of these other projects off our plate will allow us to focus on some of those projects more.
So, if this council wanted to attack, you know, some of our infrastructure, whether it's two more roads or sidewalks, the rest of it, we would just be adding to that back, to that backlog?
Yeah, at this time, I mean, we, you know, we're working through everything as quickly as we can, but like I said, I had a full-time staff of five, I was down to two for a while. We've restaffed, I just filled the last vacancy last week, so that's going to be helpful. But, you know, this, we got, we, you know, honestly, we got a fair amount of money in different projects recently, in the last couple of years, and, you know, some of it took a while to even get contracts in place. So, some of those contracts are in place now, we can move forward with them, and I'd like to do that as quickly as possible.
Bonnie, I didn't want to cut you off there.
No, I was just going to say, you know, on Derek's behalf, short time I've been here, I mean, we have a lot of departments that are understaffed, but Derek's, I mean, he has done a yeoman's job because of so many staff members that weren't there. I mean, so it was really a two, like he said, a two-person office. We're back to full staff, but in order to catch up and get everything done and get those capital projects moving, this would help immensely, so that Derek can actually concentrate on what he's paid to do than to kind of run interference with all these other positions. So, it would greatly, greatly help him.
Is it, so is it fair to say that we have nine million, million worth of projects that are not able to proceed without this help, along with the rest of the staff?
Well, we'll proceed. You know, we're looking to do it quickly. This work in particular, you saw the quote, I have some drainage projects that have been problematic, some very recently, some have been a problem for a while, that, you know, it's something that staff can do, and we don't necessarily have the right software for it, so I might need to buy some software to do it in-house. And I, like I said, I just hired another engineer last week, so it's nice to have another engineer in the office now, but that will take some time. So, having, you know, unexpended salary funds from last year, this is a portion of what we didn't spend. We figured, you know, at the time I talked with the previous town manager, that would make sense to try and get someone onboard that can work in parallel, as we're working on other projects, to move these along. Particularly with some of the flooding that we've had, and we have residents that had water in their basements, and they don't want to, you know, rebuild and repair anything until we've looked at what the issue may have been. It may have just been the systems are not designed for the amount of rainfall we had, and that may be the case, but we're trying to get to that resolution as quickly as we can for them, so they can feel comfortable doing, making their decisions on how they're going to move forward with their projects.
How about moving forward, though? Now, you're back to the five engineers. If we, you know, applied for grants, got more than you always have, you know, where we put money at the roads and stuff, but if we wanted to accelerate the improvement of our town, would you, would your staff be large enough to do that? Or is that, is it, would it be maxed out at that five now, and we need another, someone in your department?
Yeah, I could always use more staff. And, and we are, you know, we've, we've managed to kind of keep up, but as I'm saying, we've been aggressive with going for funding, which is more projects, which means more work, so if you really wanted to advance that, we have, you know, certainly, we've been up here talking about the paving needs, and we are working through that. We have a lot of sidewalk needs. Honestly, we have a lot of drainage needs that have been, you know, underfunded for a number of years, and, you know, something we'll be talking about as we go forward. So, you know, I have a lot on the radar that I'm trying to get to, and we'll get to as quickly as we can, but in general, to answer your question, yeah, I could use a larger staff to do that. I mean, as far as engineers, there's two of us now. I have a construction inspector, I have a surveyor who does GIS as well, I have a technician that does permits and licenses, and I have a part-time sidewalk inspector that, you know, we have 130 miles of sidewalk in town, I could use a full-time person easily to just be killing with residents and trying to get a lot of those repairs made. He does what he can with the time he has, but certainly, you know, there's a need for more. for more. If it was available, we'll do more than, more than we're doing today.
Thank you.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Are you at full capacity now with your staff, or you still have open position?
Oh, as of last week, we're back to fully staffed, yes.
Thanks.
And then, my question was, I lost my train of thought, but one of them was, there was a drainage issue that had been brought to the prior council's attention back, I believe, in 2018 through a petition from some neighbors down on, and when former town manager in his last month had brought it forth to me, that was one that had been sitting for three years, I guess, that particular project.
Brimfield?
Yeah.
Clearfield, Brimfield.
Clearfield, Brimfield. So, that would be a project that VHB would be looking into.
That particular one, I mean, we, we, I think, 2019, we got a petition that was submitted. It took me a little while to actually, because I had to do the engineering on that one and get it to the point where we can define what are our options and what would the cost be for, whether for us as the town or for those residents. So, you know, that's not one I'm having them necessarily look at directly, but it took me a little while to get to that point, and then it's, it kinda sat for a little bit. So, it came up recently because I'd like to circle back with those people and give them, you know, at least some direction as to what they can do. That particular neighborhood's been surprisingly quiet with all the rain we've had, I haven't heard anything, but I'm, I'm sure the issues that they had haven't gone away.
Right.
And we don't have, one of the issues is we just don't have drainage in front of those properties that they would be easily, could tie into. We don't really necessarily need it there, which is one of the reasons why, you know, we've, we have provided them with some options as to, you know, what they may do as a neighborhood or individuals to address the problem.
And that was the letter I had sent to everybody for you to take a look at so that we can expedite the next step and get with those residents, so if you can get any comments by the end of the week, then we'll get that letter out.
And then, as we saw over the win, over this past summer, six inches, seven inches of rain in one or two days has just, you know, overwhelmed some systems, so.
Yeah, so, you know, by industry standards, systems aren't designed to take that type of flow, and we have, we had a couple instances of that this summer. You know, I was out with residents, they got flooded in July, and then I was standing with them again in August, same thing happened. You know, I've had a difficult time getting contractors in because usually what we need to do is go in, check the pipes, make sure they're clean, make sure there's no collapses or, or offset joints or any structural issues that are causing that problem. But, well, you know, they're all very busy, and, you know, I'm getting a lot of calls from people that wanna know what's going on, and I'm trying to stay ahead of it, and we have done some of the survey work that we can, we've done some of that work, got some of it started in the anticipation that, you know, if it turns out that it's a capacity issue, I'm gonna have the engineers look at it, the consultant, and give us some options on how we can address it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from Derek while we have him? Okay. Is there a motion for this item?
Sure, Mayor. I'll motion to approve the contract with VHB for on-call engineering service to temporarily support the staff in the engineering department.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
And don't go too far away because we have the parking lot improvement funding from the state for, I guess, Old Weathersfield. And this is something that has come up in discussion, and thank you, Derek, for being at the, you at the public hearing for that with the residents of Old Weathersfield discussing the parking situation.
Yes.
Police were here, Gary had presented it. Yeah, this was a request for additional parking feasibility study, I guess, for Old Weathersfield, and, you know, as I think a number of residents who came up to talk about the airport had mentioned the vibrant activity that's going on in Old Weathersfield. I mean, people get there, they don't, they walk around there, but they don't ride bike paths to Old Weathersfield just yet, so they do drive there. Tell us a little bit about the design, the planning phases that, I mean, nothing's set in stone just yet, but, you know, this is a $500,000 allocation of funding from the state for us to look into how to alleviate some of those concerns about on-street parking, some, you know, off the arteries to Main Street. So, I guess you may not even have to describe what the plans are just yet, and like I said, those are all draft plans, but this would help us alleviate some of those parking concerns on Main Street and the arteries off of Main.
Yeah, correct. So, at this point, last winter, I did a conceptual plan to look at options to expand the public parking lot at the back of 171 Main Street, which is Fire Station 1. We did a conceptual layout, which involved some of the abutting properties as well. It's really conceptual at this point, it was at the time, isn't really intended for, you know, internal discussions, but I think the opportunity came about that we could apply for some funding for it, and we did. So, I mean, at this point, it was approved for funding. We had submitted a preliminary application to DECD to get the process started. However, at this point, now they're looking for a formal application, so the funding can be allocated, and then we can accept it if we choose to. So, that's what this request is for. As you mentioned, it's, we're looking at options to get some parking off, off of the public right of way and to try and encourage use of public lots. You know, this is gonna be a complex project, you know, as we get, as we get into design, I expect there's gonna be a lot of public court, you know, comment, we're gonna have public meetings, we're gonna have to talk a lot with the abutting property owners, so it's very early stages, but at this point, it, what the request is to put in the application for the $500,000. This is the same funding source we recently, I recently came to you for the Walker Hill Road streetlights, same, same type, that was a $500,000 award also, which has been worked into the Walker Hill Road reconstruction project. I believe we have a million dollars also for Spring Street Dam and park improvements. That's another project that just hasn't been to you yet because we haven't gotten started enough on that. So, this is just another funding source, bond funds that are available to us. There's no match associated with it, it can be used for design and construction. I will say, the estimate at this point for the full project was a low of a million dollars. At this point, with the $500,000, you know, we, we have options we could look at for phasing the project, and it wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing to phase it, see how well it's utilized, and we can always expand it, but the layout and the limits of that, still, we'll determine that, you know, based on the funding we have available, we just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Any questions for Derek on this? Councilman Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. Derek, what's the proposed number of increased spaces in the area for this project?
Well, I'm going from memory, I wanna say it's around 70 to 80, somewhere in that vicinity.
Okay. And maybe to Bonnie, but it could maybe be to you, Derek. There's the, there are some plots down there for the gardens in that area. What's the, I don't know if they've all, do we know if they've all, all the garden plots have been utilized, or they're actually like, hey, there's open plots that people aren't utilizing? Do we know what that sort of use, use cases? I don't know.
I don't, except that they, the whole time I was here, there wasn't a year that went by that they weren't taking all of them, so I would assume it's the same.
If I could chime in.
I've heard both your answers, so I...
I'll check with Kathy to be sure.
The ones towards the, further this ones towards the rear are not utilized.
Yeah.
Partially because of shading from the tree line, and also the road doesn't extend, the dirt gravel doesn't extend to the back, so if you're gonna do gardening, you have to haul all your supplies and everything.
Right.
So, those don't tend to fill up. The ones that Derek is proposing or tentatively proposing eliminating, I think, four maybe.
Is it four?
Up to four, I mean, there's options.
Part of the first row.
Yeah.
Those are being utilized.
Yeah. I guess, and where I'm going with this is probably pretty obvious, like, if we're gonna lose a couple of the gardens there in the front, can that just merely be sort of transplanted or moved to the back, even if it's like with a little upgrade to the road, you know, or something like that? So, I'd be interested in that. I, I plan on voting for this, I think it's the right movement.
Are tho, just, are those gardens gonna be removed so we can have parking?
Well, I mean, the, the plan is very conceptual. As drawn right now, I think the, the first row of four, they go in rows of four, is impacted where maybe a third of the way into those plots. So, there would be options to take those plots and rotate them 90 degrees and have two, and then we're only impacting two. There's options to just slide the plots forward, you know, north, or I guess it would be west 10 feet.
Doesn't that pose...
So, there's options to go around it, so we don't necessarily have to disturb them, but as, as drawn now, yes.
Doesn't that pose a safety issue, though, because you don't want traffic coming in and out when there's a fire engine trying to get out?
Yeah, and that's part of the discussion we're gonna have to have. Right now, the fire station is accessing and out of the lot as well as the property of the south. Fire department has, you know, had some comments on, that's maybe not ideal for them for that reason, so I, and there's gonna have to be some changes to the plan, and like I said, with a plan that's, that's been out there, is very conceptual, isn't only intended to be a conceptual layout. So, we'll, we'll definitely have more discussions on how that's gonna be handled.
Councilman Hill?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll try to be brief here. But to your point, parking is an issue in Old Weathersfield, and I think part of it is the, it's a residual of the success that the business has had. I mean, it's an issue seven days a week, especially at this time of year. I just, some clarifying questions on the funding. This is for, obviously, a DECD grant for $500,000, and then it also says, if not approved, the town will be ineligible to receive $500,000 from the bond commission. So, is this in sum a $1 million?
No, I think that statement is just saying if, if we don't, if you, if you don't authorize the manager to move forward with the application, then we'll, we will just forfeit the $500,000 we've been allocated.
Got it.
The additional funding would have to be a separate request at a later date.
And I guess that goes to my next question, it says, this will not cover the cost of the entire project, and obviously, you're still in the planning stages of your, and I, it's an unfair question for you, so I apologize, but, you know, if we're getting $500,000 in state grants and, you know, and it costs $2.5 million, is the town now on the hook for the $2 million, you know, like, what's the ballpark essentially for what the balance of this is gonna cost?
Well, as designed, it was roughly over $1 million, so this is about half of it. The thought, like I was saying, is we could phase the project, I mean, we could construct a portion of it with the plans to expand it at a later date based on utilization, if it's gonna use, you know, enough that warrants that, and, and funding availability. So, you know, I think any amount of funds will allow us to make improvements in those, the limits of those improvements and the impacts it has on the abutting properties are, you know, can be determined based on what, what the costs are gonna be. So, that, that all needs to be worked out. So, there's a lot of discussion to be had, and I'll certainly be back in front of you more than once as we go through the process to, to seek approvals for different things, so.
So, like, in terms of like chunks that will come out, it's not as if like we won't be able to access or use this until it's all, got it, thank you, that's, that's good enough, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions for Derek? Okay. Sure. Yeah, well, for the motion.
Has to be read.
Yes. Sometimes the state mandates you have to read these long resolutions.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the final, the following resolution. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 4-66G, the Connecticut Department of Economic Development, Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Weathersfield make an application to the state for $500,000 in order to undertake the parking lot improvements at Firehouse 1 in Old Weathersfield and to execute an assistance agreement now therefore be resolved by the Weathersfield Town Council, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by Connecticut General Statute Section 4-66G, and that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by interim town manager Bonnie Theryan on behalf of the town of Weathersfield in the amount not to exceed $500,000 is hereby approved. Approved, and that interim town manager Bonnie Theryan is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance, if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Weathersfield.
Second.
Tyler, are you okay there? You had, you had something to say? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Derek, thank you for all your work on not only this project, but all the work that you guys are doing tirelessly in the engineering department. Glad you guys are fully staffed and hopefully with the help of VHB can clear the docket.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, our final item on the agenda, not on the agenda, but action item. Item B3G, and I will turn this over to our interim town manager, State Homeland Security Grant. This is the MOA for their yearly, I guess it's yearly...
Every single year, same one.
Yep.
And it's basically the FEMA grant for emergencies, and we put in a certain percentage every year in the budget, and this is just in order to get the state money, and it's really, you know, we have to do it every single year, and I should hope you'd want to, because nowadays, there's more emergencies than ever in this country, so you never know when it's gonna be our turn. So, that's just something you need to authorize for me to execute.
Okay. And Councilwoman Pelletier?
I'll make a motion to, is that...
Well, I guess we can do discussion afterwards. Anybody have any discussion?
I mean, it sounds like it's not much to discuss, but...
Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents as stated above and related to the memorandum of agreement regarding use of federal fiscal year 2021 State Homeland Security Grant Program funding and custodial ownership of regional assets for the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, as well as the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, Region 3.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Moving on to the item, agenda, item four, bids, there are no bids. Item five, there are no ordinance resolutions or appointments for introduction tonight. Minutes, Sue, I believe you said no minutes tonight, working diligently in the town clerk's office, and we'll open it up to the second public comment section. Anybody wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Rachel Baird, and I live at 24 Lewis Street, Weathersfield. Two weeks ago, at the town council meeting on October 4th, I stood at this podium and stated my concerns about the selection process for the Weathersfield Chief of Police. The statements I read to you were those of an arbitrator in a 28-page decision where he concluded that the Cheshire Police Department under finalist Chief Dreyf's leadership was permeated with a pattern and practice of discrimination against female officers. Just prior to my comments two weeks ago, a gentleman also spoke about the selection process. He focused primarily, I believe, on Rafael Medina, a retired state trooper who is also one of the four finalists for the chief position. As with Chief Dreyf, I also had direct involvement as council of record in a hearing with sworn witness testimony about finalist Rafael Medina's conduct during his time as a state trooper when he was a sergeant. Just some background, a risk warrant is a process for seizing firearms from persons deemed an imminent danger to themselves or others. On August 29th, 2014, Sergeant Medina was present and participated in the execution of such a warrant in Cromwell. To obtain the warrant, as in all search warrants, the warrant was taken to the judge for finding a probable cause and his signature. The judge signed the warrant. The warrant was executed on August 29th, 2014. Subsequently on, subsequently on September 2nd, 2014, Sergeant Medina noticed that the warrant was incorrect in two aspects pertaining to the identification of the target of the warrant. Such errors could potentially invalidate a warrant, and therefore, the items that were seized would be suppressed. So, Sergeant Medina crossed out the incorrect information and inserted the correct information in the already signed and executed warrant. As I stated, this was after the warrant was signed by the... As I stated, this was after the warrant was signed by the judge and executed at the premises. Another trooper was present when Sergeant Medina altered the warrant and Sergeant Medina, in his own words at the March 9th, 2015 hearing, stated he realized it was a mistake. He and the other trooper then visited the prosecutor and told her what they had done or what Sergeant Medina had done. A supplemental report about the redaction was prepared on September 10th, one day before the hearing on the seizure. The fact remained, however, that the warrant with the two errors in identification of the target was the warrant that was executed and served. After hearing, the judge ruled that the incorrect information in the executed warrant was a Scrivener's error, that Sergeant Medina came clean and apologized and so all was fine. This is not the example young officers and even seasoned officers deserve from their chief, and it leaves the following question open. How could he possibly discipline an officer for altering a warrant or any official document, including a police report, when he, for a time seriously believed and acted upon the belief that altering the warrant was a solution? And in fact, he did alter the warrant. There's been a lot of attention on policeman's conduct in recent years. Less prominent attention has been given to the role of prosecutors and the courts of police misconduct when they condone the misconduct by not holding police officers accountable as Sergeant Medina was not held accountable in 2015 for altering a warrant. The court had a decision to make after the March 9th, 2015 hearing about the seizure of firearms that were evidence in a case, an important case which alleged that the defendant had firearms and had threatened the judge. Finding that Sergeant Medina acted improperly had potential to jeopardize the case. Sergeant Medina's conduct was condoned in the courts as policeman's conduct often is because the ends are seen as justifying the means, but ask any law enforcement officer whether what Sergeant Medina did is acceptable under any circumstances, and I don't know one who would say yes. And Rafael Medina is a finalist for the Weathersfield Police Department Chief. If anyone is interested in reading the 198-page transcript for this hearing, I would be pleased to provide it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Mr. Brady?
I'll state my name again for the record, Paul Brady, 1618 Church Street. I'm going to keep this brief, even though I'm not, I can't say I'm really pleased with the decision that you guys made to put forth language to decommission Bayard Airport for various different reasons. I'm sure that's a part of life and we can all disagree, but we still have to live together. However, there's one thing that troubles me as we go to the topic of economics. I find it very alarming that we can decommission an airport. It's dangerous. People are going to get hurt. But we have no problem stocking multiple businesses in a densely populated area, more so than anything else, drinking establishments seem to be a very big thing in today's COVID society. And maybe no one's worried about their children, but I'm a young parent. I only have one child. And there's nothing I wouldn't do for him because that's my legacy at the end of the day. I don't know how you feel about your kids, but that's how I feel about mine. The reality is, it is quite alarming that, yes, the airport is noisy, people will get hurt, according to everybody's testimony, people can get hurt because they fly so low. But the reality is here is we all look at those negatives, right? And you look at the positives of the negative things that you're putting, the poison that you're putting into our communities, where our kids, where our kids live. Where, where post-COVID, we all used to watch Weathersfield high school students as they get out of school at 2:30, walk down to Old Weathersfield and they hang out, top their friends, buy ice cream, sit at the pizza area. Now we're congesting those same areas with liquor. Pretty soon, I guess tobacco will follow because people will all bring cigarettes to smoke. Can't say I support that, and I am just going to say that that is quite alarming. Believe it or not, an airport has the potential to change a young kid's life. An airport has the potential to keep kids off the street from stealing cars because if we put recreational, our after-school programs in those airports in partnership with the, with the businesses that are there to actually teach these kids beneficial knowledge that will help them in the future, that will potentially give them a job, it can potentially change the trajectory of their life. Alcohol isn't going to. So out of the benefit of a couple tax dollars, you will blight, you'll blight the children's future. I know this probably has nothing to do with you guys because you don't make the decision, but you do in a way because you have the potential of appointing the people that sits on planning and zoning, which the reality is, is a big problem in local towns. The greatest power a town has is land use. And when you appoint someone to sit on those boards, they do harm or they will do good. And I can see what's going to, what's going to follow. That's really all I have to say. I hope all of you tomorrow join the planning and zoning board because whatever the outcome is, we all are going to have to live with it, one way or another, because at the end of the day, the buck stops with town council. We elect you guys to be stewards and leaders and we expect you to lead. Thank you very much and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Seeing none? Okay. We'll move into executive session and we will invite interim town manager Bonnie Therrien, HR Director Claudia Tatia, and Physical Services Director Sally Katz.
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Ayes have it.